Welcome to the Newbury Board Zoning Board of Appeals for our hearing scheduled and published for Tuesday evening, September 23rd, 2025. Few moments past the seven o'clock hour, that's our published start time, and that's when we begin to both conduct our business, begin the process of opening our hearings and our meeting as well as record and broadcast. The device you see sitting in front of me is called an owl and is simultaneously broadcasting video as well as audio in real time. You'll see behind you a screen where everything that's being published or referenced from materials or by applicants for the board, the members of the public that are in the, you know, in the room this evening, as well as anyone that might be following online. They'll be seeing the same thing that we see on our laptops behind us on this screen and online. I'll take a moment and introduce myself. My name is Rob Champetti. I have the privilege of serving as chairman of the ZBA. I'll take a moment and introduce the rest of the members of the board, and then I will go through a quick sort of snapshot of what to expect this evening. If it is your first attendance at a public board or commission, or in particular the ZBA, allow me to say welcome, and I try to give a lay of the land of what to expect, so that if you're sitting in a chair, you know, as a fellow resident, a fellow citizen of our community, you have an idea of what to expect and when to expect it, and essentially a sense of our workflow. I think that it's always good to know that in advance. So, beginning with our, and by the way, we'll be following our agenda, which is also published online. So, anything that we are referencing in terms of supporting materials, anything that is being referenced to us in terms of supporting materials, any kind of submissions, plans, elevations, comments, et cetera, all of that is published at the City of Newbury Report's website under zoning board of appeals and can be referenced in real time as we're undertaking the business of this evening, as we're undergoing the applications that are before us, we will be publishing things behind us. Everything that you see on the screen behind us, please know, if you don't see us wrenching our necks, it is it is no intended discourtesy to the material. We're seeing it all in our laptops simultaneously, as is anyone who is not here this evening that may be following along online through the owl system. So, we will follow the agenda in the in the sequence. We're going to take care of our roll call and our sort of our housekeeping matters. We will take role. We will establish that we have a legal quorum, which is the legal basis by which we have enough voting members in the room to conduct the business of this evening. Once we've established that, I will list for the legal record the five voting members this evening, unless there is a recusal or a conflict. The five voting members will be the members that will be voting, though any member in the in the room this evening will be participating in every other way, even if they are not a voting member, if they're one of our two alternates. There are seven members of the zoning board appeals, of which five will be voting members. I'll explain that in a moment. Once we go through that matter of the preliminaries, I like to just kind of walk everyone in the room through a workflow of what to expect. The zoning board of appeals as an appellate administrative body of appointed volunteers, some flows, as does every ZBA and every city and town throughout the Commonwealth, and it's segmented into into parcels of work. We, I'll go through what that is so that you can understand sort of what to expect. Then we will get into the public hearings. We'll deal with any requests for continuances. Anyone that needs to request a different date, we'll deal with that first, and then we will get into the sequence of what's before us this evening. So, I'll thank you all in advance for your indulgence, and with that, I will take a moment and introduce the board, then take the role. We have to my immediate left, Mr. Ken Swanton, our vice chair. We have Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Mr. Gregory Benick, member, Mr. Larry Ginta, associate member, Mr. Jared Igerman, associate member, and again, my name is Rob Champetti, and I'm serving as chair. To my immediate right, we have our city solicitor, Mr. Gareth Orsmann, Esquire from Pierce Atwood. Mr. Attorney Orsmann will be serving as our legal counsel. In particular, he's been asked to participate this evening, as he will be in every evening that we're dealing with, the application for 45 Story Avenue, which is the the artist also known as the 40B project, the Kmart comprehensive permit. To my second left, we have Mr. Andy Port, our our planning director, Miss Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and Miss Gretchen Joy, who is our keeper of the minutes, and I always say this, though it becomes a bit of a bit of a cliche to say, Miss Joy has the unenviable task of writing down and typing every single thing that every one of us has to say, so our congratulations and condolences. But when it comes time for public comment, this dovetails into something I'd like to make sure that we make clear. When I get into describing the public comment section, we are going to ask that anyone who wishes to speak to kindly take the podium and the mic, so that it can be broadcast simultaneously. We ask that you give your name and address so that Miss Joy can record the minutes. Okay, with that, I'll call the roll. We'll establish a quorum, establish our five voting members to get into the business of this evening. Calling the roll, the Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Mr. Swanton here, Mr. Delisle here, Mr. Bennick, Mr. Ginta, Mr. Igerman here, and Rob Champetti, I'm present. That's seven present. That is a legal quorum, the five, I'm sorry, six present, thank you. There is a, we have a legal quorum. The five voting members this evening will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennick, and I believe, is it Mr. Ginta? Mr. Igerman, as an alternate, will be participating in every other segment of this evening, which I'll describe in a moment. The only, that that includes questions from the board, deliberations, and every other facet with the exception of participating in the legal vote. So again, the voting members are myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennick, and Mr. Ginta. So with that, we can, we'll, before we get into our public hearings, I'll just take a moment and and give you a quick lay of the land, and then we'll get into our business. If you are new to ZBA or any public hearing, the flow of work is important to know so that you know what to expect, and you can engage and govern yourselves accordingly with respect to participation, which is, I'm sure, why you've taken the time out of your personal schedules to join us this evening, which is very, very important in the public process. We begin with every ZBA hearing with a reading by me as the chair of the legal description of the application. This is an application where I will describe it by address, by applicant, as well as by describing the relief being sought. Because the zoning board of appeals is an appellate administrative board, we grant relief based on specific guidelines, either a variance or a special permit, or a special permit for nonconformities, or a blend of all or each or some of all of those specific legal requests that an applicant may make. I will describe that so that anyone in the room who might not have the agenda in front of them will understand by simply listening what it is that the applicant seeks. Beyond that, I'll also describe the the property address. This will be essentially just restating what was in any legal notice or a butter publication. So if you are in a butter, or if you just simply followed the daily news and saw this, you will recognize or may recognize that it's easy to follow what application, what applicant, and what address and what they're seeking. The applicant seeks a special permit for, you know, for nonconformities or or what have you, a variance, et cetera. Beyond that, and so that no one in this room, God forbid, needs to actually be an attorney to understand what's happening. I also like to describe it in very natural language, which is beyond all of that legal criteria, I'll simply describe what's in our agenda. For instance, the applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and approvals to demolish a partial structure and reconstruct an extension or what have you, so that you can understand in the built environment exactly what it is that's being asked of us as board members. Once we've we've announced the application, I'll then open the floor up to the applicant. That's when the applicant will take the podium, either the applicant, the applicant's attorneys, the applicant's representatives, architects, engineers, all of the above or select of the above will come and present the application. If they have any any visual materials, a PowerPoint, et cetera, that has already been supplied to us, we're all seeing it in real time, and you'll see it right here, as will anyone who's following along online. So, as references being made to elevations, or plot plans, or surveys, or or bullet points of a presentation, all of that which we see, you see, the public sees, and is part of our public record, and it's important just sort of for the contemporaneous, you know, situational awareness, if nothing else. Once the applicants finish their presentation, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we go to public comments. Public comments is when I'll ask Mr. Port to put up this slide. We ask that anyone who wishes to speak to kindly raise your hand in the room first. We will deal with folks online second. But if you wish to be heard, we simply ask you, raise your hand. I'll identify you, and we'll invite you to the podium to kindly give your name and address. Please know that you needn't say you are either for, pro, or against, con, any application, though you're certainly invited to to describe yourself and your sentiments and comments that way, but you you have no obligation to, you know, to rise in support of or rise in opposition to. You may simply share your thoughts with the board, and we we wish to hear all of it. There needn't be any vertical or column in which you must place that. So, just simply raise your hand. We'll recognize you in as many hands as we see. We do ask that in the interest and respect of others, especially in a large room like this evening, we ask that you kindly govern yourselves with courtesy and respect to each other and our collective selves to be in and around two minutes, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. I will be as courteous as possible to give great, you know, discretion and further courtesy to let you know with some sort of queuing that we'd ask that you kindly wrap things up. But we ask that, hopefully, you you need none of that queuing, though I'll certainly offer it. And just try to make sure that you can come to a beginning, middle, and end, so that we can hear from everyone who wishes to speak. Once we've gone through the room, hands in the room, I'll open it up to any hands online. This is when virtual members, virtual members of our community that might be listening and following will simply, they'll click their raise hand icon on Zoom. We will then see that, we'll unmute their mic, we'll ask them to do the same, and for anyone that's listening online, this is when we will ask you to make sure that your your mic is unmuted, and again, you'll give your name and address, and your your comments are, however you wish to frame them. Once we go through the virtual room, we'll we'll close public comment. Before I go on to the next segment, I'll just simply say this. If if you wish to frame your public comment in the form of a question, we certainly welcome you to do so. We encourage you to do so, but please know that we mean you no discourtesy if members of the board, neither members of the board nor myself, are able to respond directly to your question. You may frame it in the form of a question, but know in advance that we we mean no disrespect if you do not hear a direct answer. It is simply how you may frame it, but rest assured, members of the board will be listening carefully, taking notes, and you may well, if not certainly, hear and see your question posed during public comments, restated, paraphrased, or restated verbatim by any member of the board during the third segment. So after we get through public comment, I close that section, and we go to questions from the board. If you do frame your your comment in the form of a question, we, as I said, you you may well listen to hear your question adapted and restated in some form by one of the members. During the third segment of this evening, you, we will go to questions from the board. This is when members of the ZBA will pose questions that they themselves have, questions that were born of public comment, questions that are just simply shared sentiment by between members or individually shared by any one member. Questions will be posed to the applicant, the applicant's representatives, all of the above, any of the above, et cetera. Once we've gone through all of the members of the ZBA with questions, we will go through and make sure that all questions are are satiated and to some extent responded to an answer to the satisfaction of the the posing party. We'll then close that section and go to deliberations. Deliberations is the segment of ZBA just before we undertake to have a vote. It's essentially when you listen to the members of your community who are, you know, volunteer and appointed to sit here, deliberate the legal criteria of what's before us, whether or not the applicant has presented information that can seek to or aspire to satisfy the legal criteria that's being sought, whether there's information that's wanting or missing. It may actually prompt additional questions, and if that happens, I'll actually open questions up again and allow us to, you know, backfill with the necessary information. It's really, this whole process is about trying to drill down into bedrock as best we can with the time that we have, with the foibles of imperfection of each of us and every one of us, to get to as much of the information as we can to come to the best decision we can. So after we get to through the deliberations of every member of the ZBA, we will then close that portion of the public hearing, and that's when we will undertake a vote. Under Robert's Rules of Order, you'll hear me entertain a member of the ZBA to pose a motion to approve. This is how that question is placed on the table, the virtual table, for a vote. Please know that even though it is framed in the affirmative, that is, to say that even though it's framed in a motion to approve, that doesn't mean that the member making the motion intends to support it or plans to vote in favor of it. It's simply the procedural format under the under Robert's Rules of Order to allow that motion to be placed for a vote. The motion's made in the affirmative, motion to approve, it's then seconded. Once it's made and seconded, I call the roll, and we need, in order for an application to be successful, it must have at least four votes in the affirmative. Four yeses means that the motion carries and the matter's approved. So, I appreciate and certainly apologize in the same breath for the the indulgence of going through that with everyone. I know many, or maybe some in this room are are already well familiar with this process. It's it's feels like it's worth the extra effort to make sure that anyone, everyone in the room, even if you've never been here before, has an understanding of what to expect. So with that in mind, we can now get into what we will be doing this evening, which is opening up our public hearings, and we have, so we have public hearings this evening in sequence, 45 Story Avenue, Port Plaza Realty Trust, 20 Erie Avenue, 9 Bromfield, 9 Christopher, and 297 Merrimack Street. I'll say this as well, in the interest of, you know, what, trying to make sure that the members of the ZBA, as well as each and every one of you, are not here until the wee hours. We do establish a hard stop of our business so that we can get only good work done with full attention after a long day of about 10:00 PM. So we work in reverse from about 10:00 PM. With that in mind, we have, we have the matter of 9 Bromfield Street, which is, I believe, a a request for a continuance. And by the way, we're going to take any continuances first, so that we can deal with all of those and thin out what is actually before us, and then we'll get into the substantive matters this evening. So, I understand that 9 Bromfield Street, we have a, we have the applicant's request to continue that to the hearing date of October 28th. Is there anyone here from 9 Bromfield Street that wishes to be heard? Seeing no hands, we'll just simply undertake that on the applicant's request. Members of ZBA, do we have any comments? And in the absence, do we have a motion to to approve the applicant's request to continue 9 Bromfield Street to the hearing of 10:28? So, move. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. In a second. Thank you, Mr. Ginta. Motion's made and seconded. Calling the roll, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennick, Mr. Ginta, Mr. Igerman? Apologies. And I vote yes. That is one, two, three, four, five. In the affirmative, the ice habit motion carries. That matter is off of our agenda and on for the application date of 10:28. We also have two other applications, 5 Christopher Street and 297 Merrimack Street. We'll begin with 5 Christopher Street. This is an application by Stephen Kobsik, and apologies if I've mispronounced that. It's a special permit for nonconformities. With respect to this application, is there anyone here for that application this evening? The reason I ask, do we have?
Someone raised, I mean, on my.
Oh, great. If we can unmute the mic. I can't, I'm not online, so I'm gonna have to allow you to. Actually, it's so, that's really great.
Hi there.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
If we could ask you your name and address.
I'm Kristen Kobsik at 5 Christopher Street.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kobsik. This is Rob Champetti, ZBA chair. So, we're calling your matter out of sequence because we are, any any other applicants that are on for this evening, given the the breadth depth of what we have before us this evening and our hard stop of 10:00 PM, we will make sure that anyone who is at risk of not of us not reaching substantively by the by the 10 o'clock hour, that we give you an opportunity to request a continuance so that you're not waiting around till the end of the evening only to find out that we don't get that business done. We always want to try to be transparent in that. So, is there, do you have any thoughts on whether you wish to stay in the queue?
I, I'm sorry, I would really love to be heard tonight, and I actually just live down the road, so I was planning, I'm just gonna put my kids to bed, and then I was gonna come on up and be ready and willing to present in front of everyone.
Very good. If if it works out in spite of our best efforts, pardon me, in spite of our best efforts and intentions, if it comes to pass that we're unable to get to you, you have, on behalf of my colleagues, my apologies in advance, but we would, we would entertain a continuance then. But I understand that you want to stay in the queue for now. Yes?
Yeah, I definitely do, yes.
Very good. Thank you very much, and thank you for for joining in via Zoom for that. Going to 297 Merrimack Street. Attorney Mead, I understand you represent the applicants. Same question to you, counsel.
Here, so I'll just hang out and see what happens.
All right. So, we have both of those applications will remain on our docket.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Also about 20 Erie.
Yeah, I just was looking at that 20 Erie we'll get to. And lastly, on our docket this evening, we have the application from Driston Tola of 20 Erie Avenue. This matter was continued from July 22nd. This is a special permit for nonconformities. Do we have someone here from the applicant?
We do have the applicant.
Ah, very good, sir. Thank you. Do you, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, please. And counsel, if you could just introduce yourself.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board. Chris Thornton. I'm an attorney. I'm in Raleigh. I represent Drayton Tola and Brianna, Lena, the applicants this evening. We're here again. Actually, this is our this repeat visit for us. We've given you a little bit of a break since we were last here in July.
Counsel, if I can, I don't mean to, I don't mean to interrupt you. I I apologize. We're not going to undertake it just yet, but I want to just simply poll your client and you as to whether you wish to, because the first matter that's on our agenda is 45 Story Avenue, which we're going to undertake next. It's a very granular application, as I'm sure you're aware. In the event that, although it's less likely for you as sort of number next, but in the event that we run short on time, do you wish to just simply stay in queue, or do you wish us to entertain a request for a continuance? Very good. Thank you, counsel. And my apologies, I may need to draw you all the way up for that, but thank you. Okay, I believe we've gone through everyone that, everyone else on the agenda. So, with that, we will commence with our public hearing, and we will begin with the application 45 Story Avenue. 45 Story Avenue, this is a continuation from the hearing date of August 26th, 2025. The application is Port Plaza Realty Trust care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, and Costa. The application is a comprehensive permit, subject to Master General Laws Chapter 40B, the construction of 212 total residential units in one building, and framed as comprehensive permit 25-1. Attorney Mead, I believe we've left off last with, and we're in the, for anyone in the room that maybe knew this evening, we've tried to verticalize the subject matter, what we'll call pillars of subject matter for purposes of what is very comprehensive, a comprehensive permit, and we're dealing with traffic and traffic analysis this evening and parking. Is that right? Yes, I wanted to make sure I didn't misquote it. So, this is the subject matter vertical that we're in this evening. We'll discuss the change of subject matters as we progress through the movement of this comprehensive permit to hit all pillars, but for right now, that's what is before us. Attorney Mead, I believe that the floor is yours. We have, we have the traffic study from the applicant's consultant, as well as our peer review, and we're going to get into that as well. I believe we have our city engineer here as well, but please.
Thank you, members of the board, to the representative Mead, Mead Tellerman, Costa, 33rd Street, and your report on half of the Port Plaza Realty Trust. With me this evening is Jeff Durk from Vaness Associates, who will be providing the traffic review. Also, should there be any questions related to engineering, related to the parking layout and whatnot. Randy Myers here also for Boller, just to be able to address any of those questions also. I did want to just do a couple of housekeeping things real quick for the board. As the board knows, the police department, the building department, the health department, the trees and sidewalks, and the planning director of all side off on the application under the open government peer review, excuse me, reviews. The energy and sustainability and ADA coordinator had some comments related to the building design and ADA access, and this was an outstanding comment at the last meeting, and I just want the board to know that I'm informed by the architect that the project will be designed to meet the 10th edition of the 780 CMR as control of construction, and because the report is a specialized stretch energy community, it will meet all of those and exceed those requirements in 225 CMR for multifamily. The specialized code actually requires compliance with the passive house standard, and it will meet that standard. Additionally, it will be, of course, designed to be compliant with the ADA and the MABV. So, I just wanted to close that out. That was kind of left over in the last meeting. Also, we've received comments for the water and sewer permission relative to your request on the privilege fee, as well as a memo from special counsel that addresses those issues. Finally, the fire department, or not finally, but the fire department has also issued their technical comments that they have no concerns about the fire safety aspect for the project. In fact, they say, quote, "Currently, our equipment can handle this building and access to it." I do acknowledge that the fire chief would like a new fire truck for the West End, but I'm sad to say that the project will not be purchasing that fire truck. And then finally, the conservation commission process is over, and they have issued an RDA for the project as well. And with that, I'll turn this over to Jeff Durk to do the traffic presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Durk, and we are the transportation consultants for Vaness Associates. We provided, or I provided, a general overview at the initial outset of the public hearing process for the project. Since that time, we've had the benefit of peer review, actually, two peer review letters that have been provided by your consultant that you were here tonight. We've also been informed by comments from city staff as well. So as I go through the presentation to make, for those of you that did get a chance to look at the pulse traffic study, now, there's been some updates, and I'm going to walk through those, and these these updates were responsive to to the peer reviews that we received. And just by way of a general overview of where we are with respect to that process, as it relates to the technical aspects of the project, so looking at data collection techniques, adjustment of traffic lanes, the analysis that's been undertaken as part of the project, and I think importantly, the amount of traffic or the trip generation for the project to establish how much additional traffic the project is expected to be produced, that's all been reviewed, and at this point, there's no technical items that are outstanding with respect to the traffic analysis. So, as we get to the end of what I'm going to discuss in it as a part of the presentation, the focus is really on mitigation. So it's looking at ways to address the defined impact of the project, but I think further beyond that is looking at ways that this project and the creation of affordable housing at this specific location provides opportunities for larger infrastructure improvements. This project in and of itself can't fix all of the issues that are occurring in the area. Those issues are unrelated to this development project, but there are opportunities created by this project to work on a larger infrastructure improvement beyond those that I'm going to discuss with the applicant that is willing to undertake as a part of the project. So now I'm getting into the more details of transportation analysis. So, the first thing that your peer review consultant does is ensures that the study that we prepare and all of those technical aspects I've described are done in accordance to the industry standards. So they're best practices that we follow as transportation consultants in conducting these analyses. So they're making sure that we follow those best practices. The state also sets standards for us. So the Department of Transportation announced, Department of Transportation has specific criteria that we have to follow as we're conducting traffic studies or transportation studies in the Commonwealth. And so your review consultant makes sure that we comply with those, and has done so in this case. So looking at how we've established our study hearing, which we'll talk about in a minute, those data collection techniques, and then all of the analysis that's been undertaken as a part of the project. So as we look at the overall impact of the project, the first thing we do is we obviously need to understand existing conditions. One of the things that your review consultant pointed out, typically, I think more so when we were closer to the city center, what we'd experienced is that during August, summer month conditions, there's a large influx of traffic. So if we were looking at things, say, along Merrimack Street, or we're closer to the city center, we'd expect higher traffic lanes. In this case, we've undertaken traffic counts in May, June, and August. The majority of the counts were actually undertaken in August of 2024. Unlike, again, what we would typically expect, as your consultant looked at the May traffic counts and some work that they had done previously for the city along Wall Street, what was found is the traffic lanes in this area are actually higher during non-sol month. And so, from the original traffic study, what we provided in our response to comments is there's been some adjustments to those traffic counts that actually increased August traffic lanes along the Wall Street quarter by about 20% because you're looking at August compared to May when schools are in session. Those May traffic counts on Wall Street in particular are about 20% higher than what is measured in August. And so we did an adjustment that is not really typical. And so we did an adjustment that is not really typical of what we would do in a community that does have those seasonal fluctuations, but that's what's happening on the roadways. So we've done some adjustments since the original traffic studies, to increase the traffic volumes, to be more representative of what happens in this area when schools are in session, and that's the majority of the year. So rather than looking at two months of the year, which would be considered the summer conditions, we've looked at the majority of the year. So ten, ten months or so, we've made adjustments. That's not a change that we've done since the original setting. Now, even with those adjustments, one of the things I think that your consultant will mention as well, as we're measuring the impact of the project, well, basically, if you look at the added traffic that we produce, it gets added on top of what we call no build condition. So you can kind of look at it as the boat floating in the water. As we increase the traffic volumes, the boat that's there, which is the project, it displaces the same amount of water. But where we're measuring it from is really the difference in the height of that water. So how much water did we displace relative to the height of the water? What we've done is increased the height of the water, but the boat that's in there still displacing the same amount of water. So as you look at what the impacts of the project are from the original traffic study to our adjusted traffic study, it didn't change. In fact, the increase or the percent increase in traffic, because we're a smaller amount of a larger volume, the percent increase is actually less. So it has that dynamic where even though we're increasing the volumes, the overall impact of the project is the amount of traffic we produce doesn't change. The impact of the project either stays the same, or it's actually reduced a little bit as we're measuring it versus the no build condition. So now just getting into those more finite details. As we're measuring the impact of the project, what we're measuring is changes in vehicle queuing at intersections and increases in delay that happen. So we look at, at the Woodman Low Story Avenue intersection. We measure delays for each of the vehicles at that intersection before and after the project's traffic. We also measure queuing on each of the approaches before and after we have the project's traffic. And then the difference between those is the impact of the project. So as we've looked at those impacts, the intersections around the vicinity of the Port Plaza, what we've identified is there's no significant increase in motorist delays or vehicle queuing over the no build conditions. Now, that doesn't mean that it's free flowing traffic, but what it does mean is that if you have a queue, let's say, on an intersection, let's say it's about five or six vehicles are on approach, the increase before and after the project's traffic is that it is about one vehicle, one to two vehicles. So that's what we're saying in terms of significance. You're not going to notice a real significant increase. It's not going to be double the amount of cars out on the road. And really, as we get to, the traffic that's produced by the project is because it's not a large increase in traffic. But those of you that are very familiar with the Port Plaza, there's multiple driveways. So you, as a resident of the project, do have the opportunity of choosing which access points you're going to use. So there's a dispersal of traffic as well. So it's not all concentrated on one single driveway, and that dispersal expands beyond the project site. So you get out to the roadway, some vehicles will travel, let's say, to the east on Story Avenue, some to the west to get to ninety-five, some goes up Noble Street, some goes down Low Street. So those traffic load volumes, when you get away from the plaza, get smaller and smaller. And so as we look at that, that's why we have dispersal of a small, finite amount of traffic, and therefore, the increase at any additional, any individual intersection is not, they're going to fall there, isn't it? Next slide, me. Thank you. Vehicles exiting the project sites, as we're looking at each of the access points to the Port Plaza, and I think primarily, as you're familiar with the site of the project, it's sited along Low Street, so most of the traffic is using either the Low Street Center driveway or the Low Street East driveway, as we, as we characterize it. Those driveways generally, in terms of the impact of the project, generally operate, operate with limited delay. Now, one of the changes that we've made is because the center driveway to the Port Plaza on Low Street, that's where the majority of the traffic that's using Low Street is using that driveway. And so as we look at during the peak periods, the queuing that happens along that driveway within the plaza is, you know, somewhere between four to eleven vehicles, depending on the time of day. And when you look at where the driveway to the project is sited, and it's generally within that influence area to the point where the queues could get back to a point where it's at or beyond the driveway. So based on comments from your, from your review consultant, what we've done for that driveway that comes outside of the center plaza, the center driveway, that's now a one-way entrance. So no vehicles will be exiting the path. Vehicles will exit upon the east side of the building and use the east driveway. And really, the reason for that is, again, so that we're not impacting what is an existing condition, queuing along the driveway. Vehicles can come in, but if they're going out, they'll use the east driveway. The volumes on the east driveway are significantly lower, because as you look at the plaza itself, that driveway is primarily a service driveway, it gives a backup of the plaza. So it's inefficient and useless circulation and reduces the impact at the center driveway. Importantly, as we're looking at any project, but in particular, a comprehensive permit project, is, is safety. That's important for all projects. But as it relates to a comprehensive permit project, and the standard is the safety deficiencies that's identified basically as a result of looking at motor vehicle crash data, where we have a disproportionate amount of crashes happening on a location that's on the state's high crash location database. That's something that needs to be fixed before you add any traffic, and that's the same for any project. But it's important, as we're thinking about improvements, or as I termed it, mitigation for comprehensive permit project, that has to be addressed. There are no safety deficiencies as it relates to the intersections of roadways that bound the project site. So we're starting with a condition that we know that there are large traffic flows, but then there are motor vehicle crashes also happening, but they're not disproportionate. It's the amount of traffic that's in the area, to the extent that it exceeds any criteria that would classify locations of high crash location, area. So that's a good thing, as we're looking at the project at this location. So there are improvements within the Port Plaza that we're going to be doing to basically connect the plaza or connect the proposed use to the existing retail uses that are in the area. We want this to be a walkable site. We want to make sure that the residents have access to public transportation services. So these connections are very important. They're important as we look out to Low Street, but they're also important as we look internal to the plaza. So there's some improvements within the plaza, outside of the boundaries of the, the project itself that we're going to be undertaking, and those have been informed based on comments from the review consultant. Lastly, in terms of what we look at in the transportation assessment, is the sight lines of the driveway. And I do have some slides at the very end that will show those sight lines. Sight lines at the driveways to the Port Plaza will either see what's required for safe operation for those driveways. The site triangle plans will demonstrate that, but those are also important as we look at placing and landscaping, because there's robust landscaping that's proposed along Low Street. So the site triangle is kind of defined, what can we, where can we place that robust landscape and make sure that it doesn't block sight lines? And then the last thing that's shown in red on this slide, this is a point that we'll raise a couple of times as it relates to the former Kmart use. In all instances, this project will generate significantly less traffic than a reoccupancy of the retail store that's there, that's over, somewhere close to about fifty-one thousand, it's fifty thousand eight hundred, somewhat square feet, is a vacant retail use that the, could be reoccupied as of right by a similar type of retail use in that plaza. If you look at that as of right reoccupancy compared to this project, this project is a significant reduction in traffic than it has a right reoccupancy. Now, I mentioned that for context, because what I don't want there to be any confusion about is we did not take any credit for the Kmart store being reoccupied. There is nowhere in the traffic study where you will see that we added the traffic from a reuse of a Kmart store into the traffic numbers, and then we compared that versus get rid of the Kmart, put the retail plaza in here. We did not do that. Our study assumes that that store stays vacant throughout the analysis period, and then we just add the residential who stole the site, so that's kind of the way to look at it. But you will see some tables that do provide some context, but they're only provided for that purpose, just context. It was not included in any analysis that gave you the job exam project. Thank you. So this slide shows the project site in relation to the Port Plaza. So very distinctible is that the orange is the Port Plaza, and the yellow is the property that's occupied by the project site. So just to provide some distinction, this is the property that we're talking about, and then the Port Plaza is same order. However, it's a different property as it relates to what we're looking at from the standpoint of the project. The project is what's showing the yellow area. That's what we're analyzing, but we are analyzing it in the context of overall area, including what happens within the Port Plaza. So, next slide. The importance of this slide, so there's a lot of colors on this, and sorry, I apologize if it's hard to see, especially for the audience. But what we're doing here is we're showing the existing conditions context of the project site. I mean, importantly, as I mentioned, the assessment you undertake, and I think there were some comments or questions from some of the board members, this is a transportation assessment. So by its definition, we're not just looking at motor vehicle traffic, we're looking at pedestrians, bicycles as well, and public transit users. So the intent of this slide here is to look at where are there sidewalks, where are there crosswalks, what type, what type of traffic control do we have at intersections, especially those with crosswalks? Where are bus stops? And we're looking at all of that in relation to the project site. So as you're looking at the slide that's here, what you see as the orange dash lines, that's where there are sidewalks. Where do you see any blue lines? That's where there are crosswalks across the street. We've shown in the circles with the B are where there are bus stops. So the purpose of this really is to see the context of the project in relation to those other modes of transportation. And as we look at improvements associated with the project and the design of the project itself, we want to make sure we connect up to those resources, so it's important we understand that. And we understand where there are gaps, and so that we're able to fill the gaps where necessary, but to provide that context. So as you're looking at the slide here, this is a walkable area. There are sidewalks along Low Street. They're on both sides as you head up towards Story Avenue. They're on the project side as you basically travel the entirety of Wall Street in this, in this starting area. Story Avenue, sidewalks on both sides. We have crosswalks that face signalized intersections. There's also a crosswalk across Low Street in the vicinity of the west Port Plaza driveway on Low Street. So again, walkable, connectivity is in place. So we want to make sure that the project links up to what we have available. And as I said, we're on the slide toward the end that talks about the connectivity within the plaza itself that we're going to construct as a part of the project. There were also two bus lines in this area, so this is an area that is accessible by public transit. Miva provides fixed room bus service in this area. There's the nineteen bus that travels along Story Avenue. There's a bus stop within the market basket plaza, walkable again for the project site itself. And then there's the Route eleven bus, which will take you to the K-2 rail station that travels down Low Street. And there are two bus stops on Low Street, somewhere in the vicinity of the center driveway. And so as we talk about improvements, what we're looking at is our ability to connect up to that bus fleet, because we want to make sure, to the extent that we can, to offset traffic by having that opportunity for the residents to be aware of the fact that there are some bus lines in this area, and that you can get to the commuter rail, and you do not need to drive your car to the commuter rail station. So that's an opportunity that exists that we want to make sure that our residents are able to take advantage of. So as we conducted our transportation analysis, I mentioned at the outset, we did conduct traffic counts at each of these intersections in May, June, and August. The majority of the traffic counts were done in August. And I talked about how we adjusted those traffic volumes. We looked at pedestrian volumes. We also looked at bicycle volumes in this area. Bicycle volumes are relatively low, on the order of about five bicycles, I think, going along any of the roadways in the area. There's a two-directional flow. We do have the trail, the William Garrison Trail that's accessible off the slide here, but to the west of the project site, it's accessible at the parking lot as well. So again, just another amenity in this area. Pedestrian crossings are primarily focused at the crossings where the bus stop is. So we did observe pedestrian crossing activity coming from the plaza back and forth there because of the bus stop, the Route eleven bus. There are a smaller number of crosses that occur in the Woodman Way area as well, by way of the signalized intersection that's there. We did see, as it relates to Low Street, at least the majority of the crossings were related to the bus stop that exists in the vicinity of the center driveway. We measured speed of traffic on the roadways, as I talked about sight lines in each of the driveways. Sight lines are based on the posted speed limit, but the actual speed that vehicles or motorists are driving along the roadway. Now, the roadways in the vicinity of the site have a speed, posted speed, I believe, somewhere under thirty miles an hour. The majority, the majority of the traffic is going close to that. Actually, I should say the statutory speed is twenty-five. The majority of the vehicles are going closer to thirty miles an hour. So that's where we've assessed up sight lines and not the statutory speed, because the actual measured speed are higher than that. So we've made sure that we need or exceed the criteria for that actual measured speed. Now, as I mentioned in looking at the impacts of the project, we're looking at impacts related to delays in vehicle queuing versus what we could call a future no build condition. So it's established that seven years in the future, without the project being built, you look at what those traffic volumes may be. We work with Andy's office to understand what the future conditions may look like with looking at a couple of things that Andy provides to us. The first is additional development in the area that has not yet been constructed, that they have trafficked in the areas. We want to make sure that we include that. We also look at general traffic. So nothing else were built in this area, and you just had traffic volumes that would increase just by way of additional automobile ownership at high school and households. So if you had someone in your household that doesn't, is currently a driving age, and then they do get a car within the next seven years, that would increase traffic volumes irrespective of any additional. That's why we make sure that we include some representative factors as it relates to just general increase in automobile travel areas, because of those type of situations that disrupt it. And after that, we have to estimate the trip characteristics of the project itself. And that's what's shown on the chart here. So there's several columns and rows as we look at the chart that's here. What we've done in that chart is we looked at the alternative modes of transportation that are available at this site. So as I said, there's the ability to walk, you can bike, and you can use public transportation. In order for us to understand what that utilization might look like, what we do is we review U.S. census data for residents of the city. And in this particular area, how the residents use these alternative modes of transportation to commute to and from work. And so when we're looking at that census data, we're able to establish what we expect the utilization of those alternative modes of transportation to be. So based on the census data, what we've estimated is about eighty-eight percent of the traffic, so call it ninety percent, will be made by a personal automobile, so single occupancy type of vehicle trips. And then the balance, somewhere around ten percent, this is actually twelve percent, would use either public transportation or walk or bike. The majority would be walking or biking, just given what's available in the area for retail opportunities for, for jobs. So that's what we see. Those numbers as it relates to transit and pedestrian bikes, you can see they're relatively small, you know, on the order of seven, three to seven trips associated with the project. So it's not a large number. The majority is made by means of private automobile. The far right-hand column, which I've shown in the yellow shaded area, that's the net increase in traffic we expect the project will produce, not related to the Kmart, but just net new, as we'll estimate in the traffic setting. So for one reason or another, as we're looking at the breakout, you can see during each of the peak hours. So what we're looking at is the morning peak hour. So we're looking at a condition on Low Street or Story Avenue in the morning, when the traffic volumes are at their highest level. So you could look at that as people are heading to school to drop their kids off, or they're commuting to work. There's a time period in this area, it's actually seven-thirty, eight-thirty, when the volumes are at their highest level. And so we look at that time period, and then we're going to add our traffic on top of that and see what the impacts are. So during the morning, so this is a seven-thirty to eight-thirty period where the volumes are the highest. We're going to produce about seventy-three vehicle trips coming out, in and around the project site. And we look at also the evening time period and the Saturday time period. So the evening peak hour in this area is four-thirty to five-thirty. That's where the volumes are the highest, will produce seventy-three vehicle trips during that time period. And then during the Saturday, there's a peak hour that happens as well. That's important, nice to evaluate, because we're right in the middle of shopping center. So the Saturday peak hour occurs between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty, will also produce seventy-three vehicle trips during this time period. So that's the increase in traffic that we're expecting and how we're evaluating the impacts of the project. Next slide. So again, this is the contextual slide that I had mentioned. So we looked at that increase in traffic as it relates to a reoccupancy of the Kmart store. And what you see across the board is the project showing column A versus the reoccupancy of the Kmart store by a general retailer, which is shown in the center column, column B. The project is significantly, generates significantly less traffic during each of those peak hours than a reoccupancy of the Kmart store. So that's important in looking at context, because that's something, again, the applicant or the owner of the plaza could do unrelated to the project that we're, we're talking about today, and that would result in significantly more traffic. Not only significantly more traffic, but there's a distinct difference in that a retail use add into a retail plaza just superimposes the peak on top of the peak. So as that shopping plaza is peaking, we're adding more traffic on top of the peak that's happened. The residential use does, has a peak, but it's not the same as the peak that happens at the retail plaza. But there's a distinct difference. There's also a difference between the dispersion of traffic. Retail project, retail traffic is much more concentrated on specific times of the day. Our residential traffic is more dispersed. So there's some distinct advantages as well, um, in terms of not piling off, for lack of a better term, uh, or a different type of use. That is different peaking characteristics than what is currently available on the plaza. Next slide. So we talked about dispersal, um, and that's what this slide here shows. So, once we've estimated the amount of traffic, we expect the site's going to produce. Now we need to add it on to the roadway network. So we need to add those trips to each of the driveways that serve the Port Plaza. Three driveways on Low Street, we have two driveways that come out onto Story Avenue. And we need to distribute that traffic to each of those access points and then to each of the roadways, and this slide shows that dispersal. So what you see is, um, looking at the trip characteristics, existing traffic patterns, plus looking at the census data where. You look at if you're a resident of the city and you're recording your census, you reside in the city of Newburyport, uh, where do you work? So then we can take that information and say, these, these people would be residents of the city. We'd expect they'd have same demographics as it relates to employment centers. And then we can assign the traffic on what is the quickest way to get or route to get to those employment centers from this specific location. So it's just simple as looking at Google Earth or Google Maps and saying, I want to drive from the Port Plaza to, to downtown. And how do I get that from this project site during specific times of the day? And that will also produce a similar dispersal pattern that's used in here. So the majority of the traffic, fifty-five percent, is expected to be oriented to and from the southeast. So most of that traffic is heading toward the ninety-five interchange, actually get up to the highway. The next ninety percent is on Low Street, heading to and from the southwest or southeast of the project site, so that's uh about twenty-eight percent. And then seventeen percent is heading to and from the northeast of the project, so that's the dispersal. So those seventy-three peak hour trips that I had mentioned. We add that to each of the, the driveways, the five driveways that are available. Then onto the roadway network based on this dispersal pattern that you see here. So as you're looking at that, what you see as you get further and further away from the site, the numbers get smaller and smaller, and therefore. Um, that's where that idea of not significant impact, because seventy-three vehicles are not going through any individual intersection. It's a much lower number than the seventy-three. So, once we look at. The impact resulting from the project, uh, what we do is try, is look at ways that we're able to offset those impacts. Um, so we have a series of recommendations, the recommendations are really fall into three categories, so we have site access and circulation. So this is looking at the access into the property, circulation within the project site. Um, connectivity as it relates to the existing bicycles, so that's the first set of recommendations. We will then talk about off-site recommendations, so this is dealing with off-site locations where. Uh, there may be impacts that the project has that we're looking to address, there may be connectivity areas. Uh, that we'll try and make sure that we're able to link out to. Um, and then the last set of recommendations are what's known as transportation demand management measures. So these are measures to reduce the amount of traffic that's produced by the project. So the first set of recommendations that I mentioned, site access and circulation, so this is looking at good industry practices as they relate to the design of the site. I would say there's nothing on here that you as a board uh would not consider to be appropriate for a site plan. So there's nothing here I don't think you'd uh see out of the ordinary standard driveway widths. Uh, making sure that there's the ability to circulate within the project site, uh, stop signs, traffic control. Um, you were in a returning mention at the beginning, ADA compliance, so we want to make sure we have ADA compliant sidewalk facilities. Crosswalks, things like that. Um, and then the last set of recommendations deal with sightlines, so making sure that we don't place objects within those sight triangles areas. That will be hidden at the sightlines. So the, the recommendations as they relate to circulation within the site, um, the site engineers incorporated all of those. We make sure that we work closely with, um, the site engineers that develop a site plan to make sure the plan uh incorporates those type of conditions. It was all, all been brought to bear or shown on the site. Next slide. Um, so then looking at again some of these more finite details as they relate to site access and circulation. Um, we're going to have a couple of slides where we will get a little bit closer into the plaza. We have made some changes as it relates to the connectivity, um, for both the project linking out to. The external resources, but also within the Port Plaza itself. So we go on beyond the project site to look at how we can connect the project to all of the retail uses that are, um, are available. Uh, in the Port Plaza and at the adjacent properties, so what this is showing. And we, we're going, we're going to zoom on, zoom in on some, some specific areas. Uh, where you can see some of the work taking place within the Port Plaza, that's sidewalks, that's crosswalks, uh, things like that to link up. Next slide. So looking at the project site in more detail, as I mentioned. The driveway that comes out onto the center of um driveway. That now is going to be a one-way entry and one-way entrance only into the plaza. So as we look at that queuing that takes place in the driveway, uh, here, that extends back. Uh, to or beyond that driveway, we're only going to have vehicles entering, so no one's going to be exiting, coming out, trying to get into these turn lanes. And then all traffic will exit by way of the uh easterly driveway into the Port Plaza. Again, if you look at it, it's a finite, and we're in parking spaces, and then the guy gets you into the loading dock area behind the building. So the traffic flows at that portion of the plaza and at that driveway are much lower than they are at the center driveway. And so that provides some benefits, and again, that was a comment from your review consultant, we've incorporated that into the latest set of site plans. And you can see several connections to a reconstructed sidewalk that will be re, uh, rebuilding and widening along the frontiers of the project. And you see those connections getting into the project site. Again, linking ourselves up to the existing sidewalk uh facilities along Low Street. And then lastly, in terms of connectivity, is a crossing which we've suggested should occur closer to within the center driveway is. Uh, that crosswalk uh would be rebuilt or a new site, a new crosswalk would be put in place with wheelchair ramps. And also a pedestrian, actually with the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, so those push button flashing yellow lights along pedestrian is crossing. And that will get us the connections to the bus stop, because the Route eleven bus has to stop in both directions. Uh, generally in this location, so that provides that connectivity from the project site to those bus stop locations. Next slide. So now as we move into the Port Plaza, which you see the project is in this location here, so you see a series of crosswalks and reconstructed islands. Uh, that will allow for a resident to get onto this new sidewalk series with new crosswalks to get to. Um, the Shaw's Plaza, uh, inches, any of the retail uses that are in the area here. Get up to where the Market Basket Plaza is, up to Story Avenue. So that can all now happen within the project site without having to go out to Oak Street and then head up to Story Avenue, which no one's really going to do. So these desire lines are now accommodated by way of the improvements that we're going to be doing outside of the property, but within the Port Plaza itself. For that connectivity. Next slide. So sight triangles, as I mentioned, we, we had some plans that we drew, based on your consultant's recommendation that show. You know, if you're a motorist exiting the plaza, what this shows is the sight triangle areas. The sight triangle area is formed by where the motorists will be sitting in their vehicle, exiting the plaza, looking to a vehicle that's on Low Street approaching the driveway. And then that vehicle as it travels toward the driveway. Uh, there's a certain distance you have to be able to see, and that distance is the distance that this vehicle travels. Um, if you connect all of those points, it creates a triangle, so that's where the term sight triangle comes from. The purpose of showing that is that as we look at the areas adjacent to the driveway. Uh, where there's sidewalk or where there may be landscaping, we want to make sure that within the yellow areas that you see in each of the intersections. Uh, that we're not placing objects that would block sightlines, so that's really what the purpose of this drawing is. Right, next slide. So that's the two driveways, the center and then the west driveway, this is the sight triangle area for the east driveway. Um, these are things that would be a part of. Any conditions of approval that you have, you'd want these drawings as a part of that or add it to the site plan set so that it becomes a part of the record set. So that to the extent that there were ever anything placed in these sight triangle areas. Um, it's very easy for the zoning enforcement officer here to go up there and say, well, there's, there's something in sight triangle area that the condition says. They're not supposed to block sight, block sight triangles, so you need to remove that object. And that's really the purpose of these drawings. Next slide. So now looking at the off-site improvements. So as we looked at the off-site recommendations, the improvements, as I mentioned. We're both, we had physical improvements that we're, we're going to be taking as a part of the project. Uh, we also have suggestions on how the project may be able to facilitate additional improvements. Uh, along the Low Street corridor that we know are desirable independently of the project. So they're not necessarily things that are created and needed as a direct, direct result of the project. Uh, but the things that, you know, generally should be out there today, and so there, there are betterment that could occur. And there's ways that, ways that the project can assist the city with advancing a larger improvement context. So I mentioned the Low Street crosswalk, um, with the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, that's a commitment that will be done as a part of the project. So we would expect that that will be a condition of the approval of the project. Um, it's important for us to be able to develop those transportation demand management measures to add safe connections to. Walking and bus service and everything, so that is something that will be done as a part of the project. We've also identified a series of what we've termed Low Street core improvements. So again, these are larger infrastructure improvements, a larger improvement that goes beyond what the identified impacts of the project are. But there are things that are needed independently of the project, and so. Uh, your consultant had asked us to look at two specific things as they relate to the center driveway. So those two specific items are, number one, is there a need for a left turn lane along Low Street at that driveway? To allow for left turners to get in a separate lane or into the plaza without slowing down through traffic along Low Street? So we undertook an analysis to determine. If the volume of traffic to your left at that intersection was unduly delayed. By through traffic, so that there's not gaps and providing a left turn lane or a lot of storage of those left turn vehicles outside of the through lanes. So that analysis says that if you don't even build this project and you don't occupy, reoccupy the Kmart plaza, so it's independent of the project. The criteria would be met, um, to install a left turn lane, so it's suggested criteria. Doesn't mean a left turn lane needs to be installed, but what it means is a volume of left turn traffic based, um, in relation to the volume of through traffic. Um, that is at a level where there would be a benefit to providing left turn lane. At the, at the plaza, so again, it's something that is desirable, independent of the project, and the project could help or advance any of that equipment. The other thing we were asked to look at is, is a traffic signal needed at that intersection? So as the board may know, there's a series of criteria which are known as warrants. That are evaluated to determine if a traffic signal, um, is a, an appropriate traffic control measure of the intersection. So your consultant had asked us to look at that, we undertook that analysis, um, at the center driveway on Low Street. That analysis determined that under existing conditions, so today. The intersection would meet the warrants to install a traffic signal, independent of the construction of this project. Uh, at the intersection, so again, an improvement that meets this acceptable criteria to install a traffic signal. It's not needed as a result or not justified independently as a result of this project, but it is a criteria that's met. Um, under existing conditions. Um, and then lastly. Looking at the desirability of improvements, we know that there was a complete street study that was done along Low Street to the east of the project site, which identified. Improvements that could be done in terms of bicycling, walking, mobility related improvements that again are desirable. Uh, independently of the project. And so as we look at these three items, certainly there are things that benefit the project. And so we looked at ways that the project would be able to assist the project, the city with advancing these, these improvements. And so we've offered to provide a seventy-five thousand dollar financial contribution to the city to design construction of these improvements. Those monies can be used as for a grant application for a, for this larger infrastructure improvement. And to be able to allow for all of this to happen at the same time, provide more significant benefit along the roadway corridor. And so the project, in fact, the creation of affordable housing at this project site is that opportunity for that grant application. Uh, because the board probably knows very well, um, the state's desire to create affordable housing. Uh, they've, they've offered grant applications and more favorable. Review of those grant applications to the extent that an improvement support of the housing. And so what we're saying is that our contribution can allow for that to take place, that grant application to be applied for. And that the creation of affordable housing at this location would have that application be looked at very favorably, so highly. Highly favorable application, so, uh, that's what we've offered in terms of our larger infrastructure improvement above and beyond the things I mentioned. Wide sidewalk, new landscaping along Low Street, the crosswalk with the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. This is an additional enhancement above and beyond the constructive features that we will do as a part of the project. Next slide. I think this is the last slide, so this is the transportation demand management measures. Uh, so these are a series of measures that are done, but really, as it said, it's management measures that were kind of taken. Uh, by the property manager, so there will be a, um, property manager that will manage a property. Uh, that property manager will have these responsibilities, and it's really about making sure that the residents are aware. Of what's available to them, the alternative modes of transportation, not within getting your private car and driving around. So we talked about sidewalks, we talked about the bus routes that are in the area. Um, then there's internal features within the project site that we'll be doing, so work from home accommodations. One of the things we're looking at, the demographics and the commuting trends. Uh, what we've shown in terms of the census data, at least in terms of the most recent information, is. Somewhere close to six to seven percent of the residents in this census tract area work from home. So providing a, an area within the project site, um, so could be meeting rooms. Collaboration areas, things like that, to allow for people to not just stay in your apartment, uh, to get out of the apartment, maybe hold a meeting. Uh, with a client or something in the office outside of your apartment. Those are types of things that facilitate that work from home environment, so that's things that will be designed within the project itself. Also bicycle parking, very important, exterior bicycle racks, and interior weather protected bicycle parking. So those will also be a part of the project in order to encourage those forms of transportation. Yeah, I think that's the last slide. Okay, great. Um, thank you, I appreciate your indulgence in listening to the presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have now, or I think, Mr. Chairman, you described pretty well what the process is, um, after you've given your review consultant a problem.
Very good, um, thank you, Mr. uh, Mr. Dirk. And, uh, ladies and gentlemen, just as a quick synopsis. Uh, we've just heard from, uh, the managing director of Vanessa Associates. The applicant's traffic consultant and engineer, Jeffrey Derrick. This was a, a detailed response to our peer review, which was a response to the initial submission by the applicant's. Um, traffic consultants of Vanessa Associates, so. Uh, what I'd like to do next is, uh, since, and for those in the room that may not be familiar with the flow of a forty B project. Uh, it is permitted under chapter, under Master General laws, chapter forty B, that the Board of Appeals shall have the authority to use. Uh, at the, uh, to use and enlist the testimony of consultants. And may enlist that, um, that testimony and those consultants at the expense of an applicant. Uh, this is under Master General laws, chapter forty B, section twenty-one, as well as new reports, VBA. Comprehensive permit rules four oh one and four oh two. I don't mean to beleaguer anyone in this room with, with that, you know, sort of granular reference, but it's important to just sort of know what the basis. Of our authority is, so in keeping with that, when last we were here, this Board of Appeals did enlist under that, under that authority. The ability to, um, to refer our own peer review consultants, uh, and, uh, we have done so, um, through the expertise of. Our peer consultants, uh, which we, I will invite up to respond to the, uh, to the applicant's, uh, to Mr. Dirk's. Um, responses, so, uh, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Kevin Dandrade from T E C, T E C Incorporated. Uh, Mr. Kevin Dandrade, an apology, sir, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
It was correct.
Great. I, uh, I appreciate that, so Mr. Dandrade is, uh, the managing partner, uh, and our peer, uh, peer review, um, expert. And, um, I'll just say on behalf of our board and our body, um, we've heard in response to. To the initial peer review. Um, the cul- what culminated with seven recommendations in three separate segments of site access and circulation. Um, sightlines and transportation demand measures, um, not to summarize what we heard, but I think it's good for us to just simply. Stated and restated so that everyone in the audience, ourselves and each other, are aware of what we'd like to do next. So with that, we, uh, we, we look to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Kevin Dandrade, principal of T C. Um, we've had the pleasure of working with the city on our infrastructure projects, and this is our first full peer review with the city. Uh, but we are highly experienced in both doing work on the applicant's side and, uh, very significant work on the peer review side. Uh, including adjacent communities. I'm here to talk about forty-five story app understandably, and, um, as a follow-up to Mr. Dirk's presentation. Um, and for the boards and the public's, um. Uh, education, our scope in, in general terms is to. Do a technical peer review of the applicant's technical materials. So up on the screen, things like the timing and the seasonality of the traffic data, when it was collected, how it was collected. The future trip projections, you know, so this specific use as the two hundred and twelve residential units. How many traffic trips, fashion trips, et cetera. Is it expected, generally. The capacity, you know, so the delays, the queuing and all that, the safety. Uh, the multimodal flows, so multimodal bicycle and pedestrian, um. Those that occur on the site and those that will occur off the site that we can project and need more. The onsite traffic flows, the offsite traffic flows, and then last but not least, parking. The demand for the spaces, but also the location and general accessibility or usability of those spaces. Next slide please. So I always like to start with the commonalities, the things that we seem to agree on. And I was nodding my head on some things that Mr. Dirk presented. But the study area, we believe the study area is appropriate. The time periods are appropriate. The morning and afternoon peak periods for community traffic and the middle of the day on Saturday, as Mr. Dirk mentioned, when the plaza is very busy and it's overly with that midday traffic from people that may go in a particular direction on the weekend. We had authored the two letters, July seventeenth and August twenty-sixth. We had twenty-five different technical comments in the first letter. The applicant responded, there was some back and forth. But the foundation of the first letter was really to make sure that we had the traffic volumes right, the setting correct for what Low Street really operates like. And I think he acknowledged that with the fall of data collection, the adjustments, we happened to have the benefit of collecting data on behalf of the city down at Low Street, North Atkinson as part of a successful application for some state funding. So we had a good backdrop for when, when the traffic looked like those schools in session. In looking at V A I's other record data, it was obvious that it kind of bucked the normal trend of what Mr. Dirk described. But we suggested that it would be appropriate to look at not only what we saw in the data of what I had heard from the public in some of the earlier testimony in the project about how things are more saturated with traffic during the school year. And that seemed to pan out with what we saw in the data. Then we also agree that the new residential trips will be significantly less than that reoccupancy scenario. And even though that's not being specifically proposed, I agree with V A I's assessment that when you compare the reoccupancy with whatever retail user or mix of retail users that you might have against the proposed forty B residential project, the residential trips in total are significantly less than the retail trips. I also agree that once you get away from the driveways, it will not be a noticeable impact for traffic, particularly at Story Ave and Low Street and Woodman. The level of delay increase or queuing and backup increase that you see is on the border of, on average, one to two seconds. It's nothing at that location that would suggest that other significant traffic-related mitigation off-site at, and that's a state-owned location, that would be appropriate or even reasonable at that intersection. I also agree that the site lines can be satisfied based on combination of what's out there today, but even easterly driving, some minor brush trimming at the back of sidewalk. I don't have a concern about that. But we also know that with this change of use to go from retail to residential, there are going to be different trends that are obvious. Some of the reversal of the trips, and I think as Mr. Dirk mentioned, the trends for residential trips are very different than retail. So when you think about a residential complex where in the morning, most people are leaving to go to work to drop kids off at school, and in the evening, most of those trips are coming back. In a retail environment, you see it pretty much bounce. On a Saturday in the middle of the day, you see that the residential trips will be similarly balanced. But I have no concern about that faulty level peak hour traffic in residential development and the daily estimates. So that estimate of somewhere around seventy-three trips in each of the A M, the P M, and the Saturday midday peak hours, I believe is reasonable and it's similar to what we've seen and or used on dozens and dozens of projects. I also believe that the overall parking demand can be satisfied for the project. If you go out there on any particular day or any time of the day, like I did again this evening, where there is a void of any parking demand in that area of the Kmart plaza today and the fringes of the plaza near there. The project has satisfied the reasonable demands and based on what the local zoning requires for what would be directly attributable to the residential units. But we had some comments in our first letter that had questions about exactly how and where some of the spaces, like the accessible spaces, that were exterior of the building where they were. And we'll get into that in a moment. But overall, as the big picture scene for parking, I have zero concern about the number of available stalls within the project site and adjacent to the project site. The Atkins team did respond to my earlier comments about the onsite conflicts related to the Wesley garage access point. Because it was for a signal that for people that are typically going towards the highway, that they would want to try to exit to that side of the building with that fifty-five percent that Mr. Dirk showed getting toward, going towards ninety-five. As they try to take a left down the garage, then they would encounter queuing that already exists today at the stop sign and potentially have more significant block. So they were responsive to then change that and say, all right, we'll make that an entrance only. But I'm very comfortable with what I had suggested in our first letter, which is most of those exiting trips, now all the exiting trips from the garage, the underground parking, would go into the east of the site driveway because there's significant capacity there. There are adequate site lines and it removes some of that friction from that center driveway location. One of the questions that we prompted in our first letter that they answered in the second, or their responses to our first, was that he indicated in the presentation that a left turn lane is warranted today. But no extra traffic from this project or the reoccupancy of the former Kmart. A left turn is needed on Low Street today. A traffic signal is warranted based on the current volumes as well. So that is important to understand because although the changes in access, most of those exiting trips may not come out to the central driveway, but keep in mind that a lot of that entering traffic that comes, say, off the highway right onto Low Street, left into the center driveway, then right into the garage, that will increase the volume of left turns into that plaza driveway. That's important to understand because as with any forty B, we're not looking at necessarily the accounting of trying to buy back capacity impacts. We are looking at the safety-related aspects of these applications. So those safety implications or considerations are focused on traffic, but they're also focused on pedestrian access. We agree that there is a need for pedestrians to cross Low Street. Whether they're going to get an ice cream, whether they're getting on the amoeba bus, whether they're walking up the other side of Low Street to get up to the CVS. Whatever the needs may be, there are pedestrians already crossing there. I've witnessed them directly to try to get access to the bus system. And that will be increased considerably with two hundred and twelve units that sit right at the edge of the intersection. Next slide please. So as far as the summary of some of our suggestions, I think it skipped one. Sorry, yeah, I better go out and budget. So some of the recent changes that the Atkins team has made, they made some minor changes to the onsite flow internal intersections within the plaza. They did commit to adding new onsite pedestrian connections. I think that's really important because when we look at the usability and whenever we touch a project as part of a peer review, we want to make sure that we can understand the likely users where they'd want to go, but to try to have our common shape, what could make it a better project? You know, when we first looked at this and I said, okay, well, you've got a big residential project here that's not there today. And you have something as simple as a bagel shop up on the north end of the plaza. It's foreseeable that somebody would want to leave their apartment, go down and walk across the plaza to try and get to a use like that. So I was happy to see that there have been some improvements and some commitments to try to connect the people and the places on the site as an enhancement of what was any original plans. The fact that that Wesley garage opening is now limited entrance only removes a lot of that friction in close proximity to Low Street on that center driveway. They've talked about establishing a reciprocal easement agreement, but more or less with themselves. The applicant is the owner of the plaza, but to make sure that they identify areas that are set aside so that in a legal agreement, the different spaces that are shown on the fringes of the residential parcel have the ability to use those from a legal standpoint. I do have other comments about, you know, the functionality of where they are versus pedestrian trips and usability in the plaza. But I think that that is a step towards really a shared parking environment, which independent legal agreements is going to happen, but they didn't even all agree on that. The applicant did offer a seventy-five thousand dollar contribution. We in our first letter suggested as a multimodal fair share. And really, the background of that is that, you know, as I've worked with T P S on different projects in the city and I met with a former director when first looking at what became a successful grant application with the state for Low Street, North Atkinson, we talked about the idea that there is significant potential for Low Street. There's no core study yet, there's no, I don't believe there's funding for it yet. But this project is going to introduce walking and biking trips, undeniably. And with understanding that there is a need for other improvements along the corridor, this project is going to add trips that will, you know, further establish the need for those things. It was reasonable in my mind to suggest that seventy-five thousand be something that could offset cities' contributions or funding in the future to try and make a bigger fix up there versus doing something that may not be consistent with, may have to be done and then redone as part of a larger vision of a project. I believe that that would be reasonable as you address the pedestrian and bicycle who's off-site. The presentation focused on that being kind of like an all-inclusive contribution, and I can touch on that. Next slide. As, as we've looked at the back and forth of the different studies, our comments, their responses at a couple of different occasions, we do believe that there's a need for some other onsite safety improvements, and I'll show you some examples in a moment. None of these are overly expensive or burn some in my mind, but may become very important as it relates to the functionality of the site and the relationship between the retail users and the residential project. I also believe that the city should consider, because the foundation of need on Low Street and the existing warranty conditions, to consider the new Low Street, these found left turn lane. There's been significant reluctance to consider those things up to date. But the applicant is also the owner of the plaza, and I think putting it in the box of trying to keep that context of, well, it's that need today doesn't address the needs and the responsibility to try to make that center driveway safer. You know, with and without the project. I also believe that there are opportunities to have more robust pedestrian crossing treatments for Low Street. And again, understanding that it's already been established within the reports, within the commentary, that there's an expectation as part of the transportation domain management, a desire to access the need with the bus system. We want to make sure that that is very safe, knowing that there are users doing it and it's going to be added with new users. In talking about the discussion, and you might have read it in our letter about the traffic signal potential, it's important because there are pros and cons of adding a traffic signal. It would have the most superior access potential for improving safety in and out of the plaza. But meanwhile, you have a stop on Low Street. So if you don't desire to go in or out of the plaza, for those people that are just passing by on Low Street, you're just adding delay for those existing users that are in the quote through street. There may be things that are constrained within the right of way. But I also believe that, and I think Mr. Dirk acknowledges in one of his letters, that just because the analysis shows that a traffic signal meets and satisfies a warranting condition does not necessarily mean that anybody has to put one in. The idea of a signal would have, again, superior control for access in and out, but it comes with other potential delays along Low Street. The idea of putting in a rapid flashing in as a warning device for pedestrians is a very good idea. But I also believe that there's an opportunity when, understanding that from a safety standpoint, this application will increase the left turns going into the plaza, that it further establishes that warranting condition for that, that left turn lane. If the board was to consider that as reasonable and appropriate safety mitigation for the project, if it's done, you could create what we call refuge island on the opposite side of that left turn lane. So east of the driveway, that could be used so that you could have a two-stage pedestrian crossing of Low Street. Somebody could push the warning device across to the median and then pause, look for traffic, and then go to the opposite side. It would essentially break up the wide expanse of Low Street into two different pedestrian movements. Again, that's a suggestion as a potential enhancement that if coupled with a left turn lane, could be a superior type of safety improvement. The idea that some of that seventy-five thousand would be considered like a fair share contribution that would accommodate the left turn lane or the traffic signal. I just want to caution the board that that terminology of fair share may be appropriate if you're talking about something away from the site. But when you're talking about the site access driveway, for the applicant, the owner of the same entity, that is really something where, unless it's meant that some other economic development grant from the state or something else, I wouldn't necessarily suggest that the city spend money as the other part of that fair share to try to implement those types of improvements or a plaza driveway when ninety-nine percent of those trips are coming in and out of that user's property. So I believe that there's a little bit more to do. I don't have any remaining technical issues on the study itself, but it's really about mitigation pedestrian indoor traffic. Next slide please. There are a couple of things that I think could be further considered. They were responsive in partially responsive in addressing one of my earlier comments about closing one of the openings to the parking lot that's directly across from the road. To try to reduce some of that friction in the closest internal intersection to Low Street. In the upper left, you can see the island as it's currently shown in their September twelfth site plan. It just creates a very odd one-hundred eighty degree movement to try to get back out to Low Street from that corner of the plaza. I had suggested in my August twenty-sixth sketch, and it's actually an idea that gains them a few extra parking spaces going in, but to get an extra car length of a buffer to make that turn a little bit more normalized so that you can come out of that portion of that parking lot, across the residential project, take a right, get to a stop line, take another right, and it just makes that a little bit easier. Next, next slide please. At the northwest corner of the building, I offered a sketch, we'll probably start with that in the lower right, an opportunity to potentially reconfigure a portion An opportunity to potentially reconfigure a portion of that site. That is partially within the envelope that they identified and established for the residential project. Some of it might be in the nearby parking lot islands. But as it currently stands in the September twelfth site plan in the upper left. That crosswalk that goes from the project towards the north is fifty-two people long. That is longer. Than the thirty-eight foot crosswalk for people to try to cross Low Street. It's inconsistent with what we would consider. You know, good site design from that, that intersection in particular because it's ultra-wide, there's not much definition where cars should come and go to. But more than that, there's an opportunity to try to significantly shorten. That crosswalk point in the middle of a busy site. How they might do that, you know, we, we try to look at it as an opportunity in the lower right to, if they framed it out. They might be able to have other exterior parking, including some of the accessible stalls immediately adjacent to the residential building. That's just an idea, there are different ways to do it, they could focus just in the intersection and then paper right back to where the island is today. But I do highly encourage the board to have more focused discussion about that area. And although they were responsive in trying to make other pedestrian connections further away from that intersection. Right at the, essentially the doorstep of the new project. Having a fifty-three foot long onsite crosswalk is. Has a lot of room for improvement. So again, those are suggestions, things that we see that could make the project better. Make the onsite flows better, but again. In conclusion, we're talking about refinements of the site plan. Nothing major or changes. But things that we think will complement and accent the project. And then it really comes down to the offsite transportation and pedestrian improvements. I think that was the last slide, yeah, so that's a summary of where we've been on this journey of a peer review and. Certainly happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dandrade, I appreciate the synopsis and the analysis. With that, ladies and gentlemen, in addition to the board's. The board's discretion and power to enlist experts and peer review consultants, the board may also, under chapter forty B, section twenty-one. Request the appearance of members of the city's own boards and commission, including department heads. And other, other experts within our city's government that may lend to and otherwise counsel this board in areas of subject matter that we're dealing with at any given time. This evening, of course, we're dealing with traffic analysis and parking. So with respect to that, we will and have actually at the outset in June requested and given courteous notice. To be on standby for appearance to members of our conservation committee and commission, water and sewer commission. As well as the city's energy advisory committee, the city engineer and the building inspector and building department. But this evening, we have enlisted and asked and have been graced with the attendance of our city engineer, who I'll introduce and ask to come up. This is, this is for purposes to give us additional feedback with respect to the information we just heard, both from the. From the applicant's consultant as well as our own peer review, looking at it through the lens of our city, so with that, mister. If I can ask our city, our city engineer, Mr. John Eric, to please come up and.
He is actually with us online.
And, okay, great, very much, very, very good, I didn't, I was looking around and I didn't see him, and I wondered if maybe he slipped out. Mr. Eric, thank you for, for being here with us this evening and I, I trust that you've heard everything that we've heard so far this evening and we'd love to hear from you. With respect to all matters that pertain to your department and your expertise, sir.
Absolutely, thank you very much for inviting me. So just for the public's edification and understanding what, you know, my role, like you said, I provide. Peer reviews, just exactly like TEC has done, I'm a registered professional engineer, a registered civil engineer, it's general. Back when I got it in, in the early nineties. I chose to be a general civil. That said, I'm not a traffic engineer, but for thirty-nine years in, in my career. I've worked alongside many, many projects that hired traffic engineering consultants and firms. And so I know plenty about traffic and so my job is. For this review or all city reviews, project reviews, my job is to make things safe for the residents, visitors. Anyone driving and walking on city streets, period. So the comments that I made were August seventh. They're from the engineering department, which is really myself, our assistant engineer also added comments to the same letter. So collectively, the two of us make up the engineering department, we provided comments. Now, I'd like to let the board know that on these comments, this, just a slight administrative thing. I've reviewed all those documents that I identified, the first three bullets. But I also, my comments are based on TEC's review of the November twenty twenty-four. Traffic study, period, that's just a clarification. Now. As is typical with our reviews from the engineering department. If we concur with the peer reviewers, in this case it's TEC. If we concur with their comments, we don't repeat them, it's just a waste of time, waste of paper and waste of everyone's time, so. I concur with the vast majority of TEC's comments. In my comments, I add, even i-if I add a comment that TEC made. It's only because I feel it's that important. And so I'm going to go straight to the most important. Issue that I see. And that is the intersection, so. It's clearly understood and agreed to by both traffic engineers that a traffic signal is warranted under existing conditions. What I. Have heartburn over is when we know that the existing conditions requires a traffic signal. And the proposed, the proposal is to, to put in an RFP, the Rapid Flashing Beacon. That gives me heartburn, I personally do not feel that that is safe at this intersection, there's too many. Conflicts, there's too much traffic, people on low, they want to get out of that area if they, when they're heading eastbound. So, can you, can you hear me?
Sorry, I just wanted to note that we missed a couple of seconds of your dialogue, maybe the last ten seconds, maybe.
Okay, so I want to acknowledge that the.
We got everything up to and through heartburn. I get it there, that'd be great.
Through what?
Through what, you, you said what doesn't give you heartburn and then we lost you.
Yeah, 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 okay, so.
If you mute yourself while John Eric is speaking, it will probably help you all because we heard everything clearly on the remote side. So if you just mute the room while, while John Eric is speaking, that will, that'll probably help.
Thank you, Ben. So yeah, the existing conditions warrant a traffic signal. What gives me great heartburn is knowing that it needs a traffic signal. This new development is going to add a lot of pedestrians for a couple of reasons that I want to get into in a second. The proposal that is being made by Vanessa is a Rapid Flashing Beacon. I don't think that is suitable with this condition, there's too many conflicts, too many cars heading eastbound that want to get away from the plaza. And I have witnessed at Perry Way, when I go to work every day and leave every day with the charter school. There's a rapid, slow, different technology, but it's still. It's still a. An actuated pedestrian crossing signal. I saw a driver, a driver the other day go through it when a person was on the. I mean, good, good news is that the person was in the crosswalk but on the other lane. But the person, the, the driver still went through it. Because in my opinion, they're getting used to these. And when you get used to these items, you tend to roll through it or simply this person just drove past it. So that said, I don't think the RFP is suitable. The reason for this is the, the current state of affairs with everything. A lot of people are working remotely, so when the traffic engineers use their ITE Institute of Traffic Engineers, Transportation Engineers. That's their bible. When they use those for trip generations and all that, I stay away from those analyses because. It's, it's not, it's not in my lane. What I can say is that the ITE is not up to date with, in my opinion. With this situation, which is post-COVID, a lot of people working remote, I've worked in, in the city on many road projects and I, I'm on the roads a lot. Inspecting construction and a lot of people are home. So with this. There's going to be a lot of people going for walks, so I highly recommend that, that the board consider. Whatever it means, reevaluate, consider any, any means to get a traffic signal in there and. I'm going to, the, that's it for the traffic signal, the only other item I have for the board is outside of the six comments that Diana and I gave. We agree with the exit only from the western garage doors. But what that's going to do is increase left turns eastbound into the eastern driveway. So I don't know, I haven't seen anything, the VAI and TEC may have done an evaluation on the right of way width. But if there's not enough width for a car to go by, a left person taking the left. That left turn, there's going to be a delay with that left turn because traffic does back up there, especially at the PM. So, A, is there enough width there, I know we have to do a corridor study throughout the entire Low Street, that's fine. But just simply for, for now. Can someone please look at that to make sure there's enough width and to possibly make improvements to that? That may be part of the seventy-five thousand dollars, that's fine. But that is my, my, my new comment for that. Yeah, and all the others, I just do, I want the public to know. You know, seventy-five thousand dollars is really, you know, that, that pays for. That does pay for many things for the corridor study. But traffic signals themselves are a lot more expensive than that, so. Just, you know, that seventy-five is not going to pay for a traffic signal. And I am, I'm all set, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Eric, I, I wanted to, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for that feedback and for your participation, we may call on you again, but we'll let you know in advance. With that, ladies and gentlemen, and also with respect to the applicant. Before we get into public comment, I want to give just one brief return for Mr. Kirk. If you wish to address anything that we've heard thus far and then I'll, I'll open it up very briefly again to Mr. Dandrade, our PEC. And then we will get right into public comment, I'm watching very carefully the clock, so I want to try to meet and measure our time and make sure we're moving forward, so.
And I'll be very brief, Mr. Drew, and what I do want to say with respect to both the comments from the city engineers as well as your peer reviewer. It has resulted in a better project, so they still have some questions or comments, I think what you can see is. What your consultant, relative to onsite, is some modifications that are some good suggestions, so. Same thing with the city engineer, I think what we're going to add is not so much me reporting more on capacity analysis and all of that. Is really, I think, working with TEC, Andy and City Stat about refining what the package is as it relates to improvements that will contribute in the project, but. I think this has been a very good collective approach, we appreciated the comments and frankly, it's resulted in a better project from where we started presenting to you. So we have some other things to do, but I hope that there's anything that's insurmountable for us to come back to, so I appreciate it, we appreciate all of the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk, Mr. Dandrade. Anything further?
Nothing else, just done.
Very good, all right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm going to do now is move on to public comment. And with respect to public comment, we'll start in the room, I'll ask for hands, I will just remind everyone the slide behind me. We do ask if anyone's walked in late, that again, out of courtesy for everyone's ability to speak and be heard from. That you kindly try to govern your remarks to two verticals, one, the subject matter pillar that we're dealing with this evening, which is traffic analysis and parking. That's the context and the, and the sort of the ether that we're in this evening, so. We do ask that you try to tether your remarks to the subject matter we're dealing with as a board and that we've heard from this evening. Also, we just ask you kindly, be courteous to a two-minute rule if you can, I'll give notice. As politely as possible to sort of help wrap things up with that, any hands from the room, and again, we'll just ask for name and address and we'll ask you to kindly take the podium just so that. Yes, Ben, so that we can, and we'll start at the front of the room and sort of work our way back, but I will intentionally try to circumnavigate the chairs.
All right, Lisa Medina Smith, one seventy-five story avenue. So I have two comments, I noticed in the presentation, there's been a different framing in terms of the seventy-five thousand dollar financial contribution, but moving from fair share. To a financial contribution and at least the applicant slides. I ask that because I'm wondering if you can explain some of the assumptions behind that amount. If it were to be deemed as fair share, my assumption is it would be calculated based on the. Total number of trips contributed by the project divided by total trips on the Low Street corridor. Multiplied times the overall project cost, but if it's not a fair share. I'd like to understand what are some of the assumptions behind that seventy-five thousand, to know whether or not that is or is not appropriate from the project's perspective. And then my second question is around the mitigations around bus usage. So with the project incentivizing more bus usage, I'm wondering if we could incorporate bump-ins. For some of the Meeva buses to be, was allow the buses to fully move over into the shoulder. So that there is no impact, especially if you're going to see an increase in pedestrian queuing as a result of the increased participation in the bus. Both on both sides of Low Street, so wondering if that could also be considered, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, can I give you your name one more time, my apologies.
Lisa Medina Smith, one seventy-five story.
Thank you. Any other comments, yes? Please.
Hi there, that's Chalk One Forty-four Low Street. Based on the address, you might be able to guess, I'm a pretty frequent pedestrian in this area, I also cycle here. So following on what Lisa just said. I had a recent experience on a bike audit, actually, on Low Street with the Meeva bus and we were stuck behind it and there's nowhere for cyclists to go. When buses are stopped there, so we definitely like to consider that, especially if it's a permanent stop for the Blue Eleven. But my main comment about this as a pedestrian is. The much-needed crosswalk at that center driveway that goes to where Haji's is now. It is an incredibly difficult place to cross this street and I really doubt. That a yellow Rapid Flashing Beacon is going to cut it here. They, it doesn't stop a whole lot of traffic, the one, there's one further up closer to Story Avenue, it's very difficult to cross there. It's difficult to cross at North Atkinson, it's difficult to cross at Perry Way, I've done them all at varying times of day. And they are quite often ignored, I would really, really hope that we. Do not move forward with this without at least a pedestrian signal with a red light that must stop that traffic. That's my two cents as someone who walks here all the time, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else in the room that wishes to be heard, yes?
My name is Nancy Salius, I live at Six Woodman Way. I've lived in this area for eighteen years, I'm Russell Terrace before I moved to Woodman Way. This is not a pedestrian-friendly area at all. And I've been complaining about the lights at Story Ave and Low Street for years. You cannot cross Low Street safely, I've had a pedestrian light as cars come around the corner with a green light. When I also have a pedestrian light, we've been nearly hit a number of times. Just two weeks ago, a car stopped and started screaming at my husband and I, I have a green light. I had a pedestrian walk light. It is not a safe area, people, cars, drivers run that red light. No turn on red, they run that light all the time off of Story Ave on Low Street. And you are correct, cars do not stop at the. And you are correct, cars do not stop at the flashing light at the Children's Medical Center. They just go right through it. I've had cars go around me when I've stopped as a driver. I've had cars nearly hit me when I tried to cross there. It's a tad bit safer than the Low Street, Story Ave spot. It is not a pedestrian-friendly area. Please look at it. I don't disagree that there are crosswalks, there are lights, but cars do not obey the rules.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Wall Thompson, one hundred State Street, Newburyport. I got a little bit of a kick out of the May, June, August traffic report. That was done twenty-four? Come on. Why wasn't it done in September, October, November twenty-four? The reason is because those are peak travel times. I asked for a stoplight for blind people at the intersection of State and High, and I've been told that that's a ninety-five thousand dollar nut. So this seventy-five thousand, I really think you could use four hundred and seventy-five thousand and build a ramp up, over, and down in front of Haji's because people will be going to Giuseppe's, the medical center, and other places. So I think that seventy-five is just a tad humorous. But for this serious body, if you would consider a ramp up, over, and down to cross Low Street, I think that would be a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Jim McCauley, I am current Board five Councilor, I've been here for six years. The past six years, I live at twenty-seven story worth drive. For the past six years, I've been trying to overcome an insufficient traffic analysis at Colby Farm Lane. We're on the verge of doing that, it's gonna cost somewhere around two and a half to three million dollars to do that. We did get a contribution of about sixty thousand dollars, but our design lost us about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars going forward. And I see this going down the same pathway in terms of looking at things with some rose-colored glasses. This project will definitely increase traffic, it will increase density of the number of people that are there and increase the number of pedestrians. The thing that we're kind of dancing around the issues on is we have expanded sidewalks, bike paths, we'll have bus pull-offs, and a lot of left-turning reach. But we have a right-of-way that's only thirty-eight feet wide. And so math works against us all the way down the street. When we look at the traffic and we look at the existing analysis going forward, I don't really care about percentages of traffic flow every day, but I know that eight thousand cars drive each way from the highway, come down down the street, and then in the afternoon, they come back down the street. So it's almost sixteen thousand cars a day. Going here, it's our second busiest street behind Story Ave, which is seventeen thousand cars. And if we'll all remember, we diverted and channeled traffic down Low Street to promote our new medical center, which is growing and very successful going on. When I look at the exit point, I'm not concerned with the analysis within the parcel itself. I think the applicant will get that to be appropriate for what they want. But when I look at the exit points going forward, when we have the center driveway that's gonna be one-way in, meaning the parking with one-way in on one side, and then what we've done is we've now added seventy cars coming out of the east driveway that fifty-five percent of them are gonna be taking a right turn, twenty, thirty percent are actually going to be taking a left-hand turn. And so now we have interrupted traffic flow going forward. Coming home in the afternoon, now we're gonna have eighty cars or so, if we believe their numbers, will not be taking a left turn going forward, which will then interrupt traffic going forward. I think the wait times were like estimated somewhere around two minutes to take a left-hand turn. And having a traffic lane that has a thirty-second timer on it in front of the Western Fire Station, I can tell you, I get a call, I get a call from the week with folks telling me the light is interm- interm- going forward. So two minutes is beyond that, and I know my two minutes is coming up right now. We actually need a light there with a rapid flash beacon. I was a little bit dismayed when we talked about traffic safety. We were, the analysis was done on cars going forward, but we actually had two pedestrians hit in the last six months in a rapid flashing beacon walkway. They were in the walkway at the time, going forward, right there, at Children's Healthcare right there. We actually, at the East Lot, we actually had a fatal pedestrian incident two years ago. And so when we add in five hundred people and we add in some other development that's approaching on Low Street, what we have is a corridor that's very busy and very dangerous unless you're in a very big car. The statutory speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour, it's the only street in the city that has it. Traffic regularly flows forty-five miles an hour or so. How do I know that? I'm in the street almost every day, Diane. I spent two months as a crossing guard, as a volunteer crossing guard because the Colby Farm kids, all thirty-five of them, were playing Frogger, trying to get across the street, while being hit with rapid flash beacon thirty-four. So my point here is that the dispersment that they're talking about isn't gonna work because the exit's gonna be concentrated on the east side, that east exit block going forward. And so especially in the morning and the afternoon where it comes right in. So the so my point here is that there are more mitigation needs here than meet the eye going forward. We, in many ways, we're squeezing the balloon when we talk about traffic flows here. Traffic stops from the corner of Low Street all the way down Story Ave to over the ninety-five to the interchange. So that's a normal day in the life of traffic that comes off the highway. It's repeated in the afternoon going forward. Adding, I think, seventy, eighty is the busy hour. I think it is less, I think it's a low estimate going forward. And I'm not a traffic engineer, I've just been chasing traffic engineers for the last six years going forward in this particular area. And so I think these numbers, based upon what's there, and there'll be different numbers, right? And so I would, our economic analysis tells me, tells us that eighty percent of the people that live there are gonna go work outside the city that is not accessible via bus. So they're gonna have to drive, they have to, so. But when they're home on the weekends, they're gonna be very active in their community in the area. And so again, I'll go back to, I think there's many more mitigation items that we have here that will be caused by this development. And they will be, they will exacerbate the existing problems that exist there today. And I think that's the debate that we'll all be having over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next hands, yes, sir? And if I could take this moment, ladies and gentlemen and members of the board, we've crossed the nine o'clock hour and sort of trying to reverse engineer the time we have. We will go until nine-thirty with public comment and hopefully some questions from the board before we'll suspend this application and revert back to the, whatever of the remaining business matters, other applications we can get to this evening. I'll go through instructions on what will be next so that everyone in the room knows where we leave off and therefore where we pick up. But we're gonna try to get through this room and online with comments, sir.
And I will only go with sixty seconds, I promise. My name's Matt Berry, I'm the owner of Elens massage. I'll be sharing the amazing wall, our business, which is the amazing wall of the current Kmart project. First of all, Mr. Joy, taking meeting minutes anywhere where Mr. Champetti has the floor in New Orleans, man, it's an evening. Hats off to you, man. Tying this, my comments, obviously this project gives me a lot of heartache, being in the massage business and being a part of this construction and being next door to this construction project, an issue that the landlord and I, the owner, are working through. I have nothing but reassurance from him that we're gonna be able to navigate that. But one of the things I wanted to bring up is that Kmart's been vacant now for the better part of the decade. And it has, you know, timeless model, and there's been a lot more, we'll call it, rap war, tenants that have come in, not tenants, but pedestrian people in the plaza that have caused a lot of concern. There's been some vandalism to our employees' cars, there's been some unfortunate sites and people spending time underneath the mezzanine of Kmart. So I'm in full support of this project, although it's gonna be some hurdles that I think we all have to navigate. I hope that the city and of all the places in the world, the cities can be able to navigate those. However, I think that it's ripe for development, and it's been such an unsightly building for such a long time now with this vacancy, that it's prime for redevelopment. And I'm excited for where it's gonna be, given the driving community that we have in the neighborhood. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for all your remarks. Next comments, yes, sir?
Yeah, my name is Bill Aiken Camp, and I live on Dolphin Street, which is the forgotten street in this discussion. Probably the fourth busiest street in town, as everybody who comes across the chain bridge has two ways to go, down Merrimack or down Noble Street, W End of Story. Story was repaved this summer, which is great. It's created a couple of issues, though. It has slowed the traffic down, everybody's still going thirty-five to forty-five. It hasn't decreased the traffic, and turning onto Story Avenue is no longer a left or right option. It's been thinned down, so there's only one line of cars. So traffic is backing up to an extent it never did before. On top of that, across the street, or the Chipotle is, used to be Papachinos. When Papachinos was there, you could only turn right. Chipotle, you can turn left or right. So that getting out of that intersection, you're taking your life in your hands every time. You throw in, what, two, three hundred cars coming out of there? Because half the cars are not gonna be going onto Story. They're gonna be coming out to the stoplight, I'm sorry, not out to Little, but onto Story at the stoplight. They're gonna be turning left to get out of town. It's going to increase that. The Noble turn, much more difficult, much more dangerous. And I haven't heard anybody talk about environmental conditions. There are certain times of the year going down Story Avenue, you can't see anything after four o'clock. So the more cars added in there, the higher the propensity for traffic. I'm surprised that there's not a crash from the Chipotle at that turn every day because it's incredibly dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next comment? Yes, I'll go to the, hand it from the group, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Julie Warren Key, and I live at three Russell Terrace, Newburyport. And I just wanted to back up a lot of the stuff that Jim was saying, because I am right by the ninety-five exit. And it's terrible up there, I talked to the state, and I've been trying to get a light there. I can't get out of my street most days, a right or a left. And if I have to do a left, I have to take a right and turn around and a car wash and everything else. People speed all the time, it's very rare that anybody goes thirty-five, forty-five. I've seen fifty, I've seen fifty-five. The police are not stopping them, I'm surprised people haven't been killed up there. So I think the traffic, and if you try to drive around Newburyport now, if you don't think the traffic's bad, there's something wrong because it is so bad already. And I cannot imagine adding those cars to our traffic situation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hand in the back of the room, yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Lucas Conrodis on that two-two-four Low Street. It's the property that the bus this whole project. Counselors, you brought up a lot of good points, thank you. One thing that has been talked about here tonight is putting in a left-turn lane. Though, as the counselor stated, the road is only so wide. So what we're going to bring about, commit domain and start taking people's properties in order to make this happen, which I'm vehemently against. And then the seventy-five thousand dollar grant, yeah, that's gonna get one, two thousand feet of sidewalk done, maybe. And the rest is gonna be grant from the state, well, that's taxpayer-funded anyways, so we're all paying into this. And this whole project is for somebody else to make money and not for the taxpayers. So essentially, we're funding somebody else's way to make money. And that's never a good thing, and I'm not supporting that, but just wanna make my point, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other hands in the room before I go to virtual hands? Going once, going twice? And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for participation tonight. This is an ongoing process, so this is not your last moment to speak by any means. Going to hands virtually, I see it's like we see one thing. One hand, yes. Looks like Counselor Ben Harmon. Counselor Harmon, can you hear us? And if so, you can unmute your mic and you have the floor.
I can, thank you. I just wanted to say I appreciate the effort by all parties to arrive at a workable, appropriate solution here. I have to agree with our city engineer that this intersection at Low Street gives me heartburn too. And I'm concerned with the proposed contribution of seventy-five thousand dollars for further study or grant applications. Or as someone earlier in comment referred to it as, you know, questionable fair share amount. In terms of the public, I just wanna state that, you know, putting this in context, voters of Newburyport recently approved that exclusion to build a rec center just down the street on Low Street with a four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollar commitment to traffic safety measures, primarily focused on crossing Low Street. So that seventy-five thousand dollars feels like a little bit of a drop in the bucket in terms of what we're talking about and facing here. As a ward counselor in Newburyport, we, you know, routinely here as a resident, I experience situations where people are veering around left-turning cars on Low Street. We've explored that along with Counselor McCauley, with which I share the order of Ward Four and Ward Five. You know, issues at North Atkinson, they're very similar. And it feels like we're just exacerbating a problem that already exists. So again, I appreciate the willingness to work with us on this project. I support the development overall, but I would like to see more funding for pedestrian safety, specifically at that intersection. And hopefully, we have an opportunity to prove that this is an emerging area for housing. But we need to balance that cost that comes to the city versus to the developers so that we can get this right and prove it for our community. It's two ninety-eight High Street if you need that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I see another hand online, Owen Smith. Owen Smith, if you can unmute your mic, you have the floor.
Yep, good evening, Owen Smith. One seventy-five story avenue in Newburyport. I just wanna talk a little bit about the right-of-way width concerns. One, I believe the travelways are quite wide. A standard lane width is about twelve feet. And honestly, they can narrow it down, which could help with some traffic calming concerns people raised. But secondly, the adjacent property and this right-of-way segment happens to be the applicant's property. So I'm wondering if it could get built into the terms that some of the land be used there that is on the buffer to be used to address the bus pull-offs and some of the other walking and biking infrastructure that was discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other hands online? I see, and Andy and Caitlin, correct me if I'm wrong, I see no other hands online to you. One last pass in the room, anyone who hasn't spoken in the room wish to speak before we close public comment, at least for this subject matter pillar of traffic analysis and parking. Seeing no further hands, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and we will move to questions from the board. In light of everything we've heard, including public comments, peer review, peer review response, applicant proposal, who wishes to begin with questions? We have eleven public We have eleven public commenters. Yes, I mean, Mr. Swanton.
I'll ask one question, maybe we can pass it around because there's not a lot of time here. But I was struck by the first couple of people that spoke about the this thought that the RRFB, those flashing yellow things, people drive through them. That's been my experience too, as I look around Newburyport. And I think the first, one of the first people who spoke said, why don't we have but something a pedestrian can push and the light goes red? So has anybody considered that? I mean, that's not, we're not talking about a full-blown, I assume you the person who suggested this wasn't thinking about a full-blown traffic light that would, you know, even if there was nobody there waiting as a pedestrian, it would just go on and off all day long, just a light that goes red. So a pedestrian can get safely across the street. I guess, I don't know who I'm asking this to. Am I asking this to the nest? I'm asking this to tech? I mean, have you guys considered that solution to a very serious pedestrian concern?
So I'll, I'll start and Kevin can nod his head or stand up and be displeased. So the difference between what you're talking about, just called a hawk beacon.
A what?
The hawk beacon is what it's called. That's, that gives you the red light. That it's flashing until you push the push button. Then it goes yellow, then it goes red, then it goes flashing red. So it's a different type of traffic control than the flashing yellow lights. So that's more of a positive control. You have to stop when the light is red. It's basically a stop signal. In order to install that, similar to the signal, you have to need criteria or warrants to justify putting that in because you're physically stopping the traffic. Those warrants are pedestrian-based warrants. So you have to have a certain number of pedestrians crossing the intersection per hour. I would need to look to see if we rise to that level of having that number of crossings, but we can't install it. We don't need those crossing lines. They're actually quite hot. So you typically, when you see those type of controls going to be in a downtown, probably in the downtown Newburyport area, there's probably some crossings that might raise, rise to that level where there's that signal.
There are some. They change very quickly.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that this is a location that meets that. Certainly, we'd be happy to look in to see if it meets the criteria, but how much rises to that level? That's why we proposed the hybrid beacon for the pedestrian rapid flashing beacon because it doesn't necessarily need to meet the same level of criteria. That's the reason why.
Does tech have anything to add on that?
Thank you for the opportunity. Right now, the intersection that's up there on the screen does satisfy the warrants for traffic signal. So if a signal went in there, pedestrian crosswalk would be fully signaled as too. If you were to just signalize the crosswalk itself, you would want to offset it more like a mid-block location where it would be a little bit further away from the central driveway. Just enough where it's focused on the pedestrian movements. As Mr. Dirk mentioned, a hawk signal, what's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon, is something that we've tested, explored, analyzed down at North Atkinson Street, the Low Street. Because of the heavy volume of traffic on Low Street itself, it only requires twenty pedestrians crossing per hour toward that type of device. It's, it's kind of a halfway point between a warning device like the RRFB and a full just regular green, yellow, red traffic signal. It's something that's dark until pressed, then it starts flashing crazy in yellow. But it goes to a solid red, as Mr. Dirk mentioned. That is an opportunity. With the pedestrians that I saw when sitting at the corner of the intersection, for those that are trying to access the bus room, it's reasonable to assume that with the introduction of the project, that it wouldn't be very difficult to satisfy the twenty-four hour. If you want to do that, though, I would say you should just put in a full signal at the central driveway.
I mean, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but just roughly, a full signal, I've heard it's like a million and a half dollars. Is that correct? I see a knot in on the back.
Depends on the level of curb line changes, but for something like the central driveway, if you try to introduce a left turn lane and put in the traffic signal, it's, it's going to be north of three quarters of a million dollars, probably closer to a million or more too.
I see. And, and this red light idea is just about as expensive, so you might as well do the whole traffic signal.
No, not necessarily. If you did that in a mid-block location, that might be something on the order of, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand total. Just focus on pedestrians and away from driving.
The whole lot was.
It is a whole lot.
And how much is, just for comparison, how much is that RRFB thing?
Less than half of that cost.
I see. All right.
But as I indicated during the presentation, I think it RRB just by itself on the side of the road would pale in comparison to doing other things like a refugee island or other things. So just by itself, I don't think it would be sufficient enough to meet the needs of what I see on there.
I see. Okay. Well, it's a meal, though.
No, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Dandren. And thank you, Mr. Kirk. I appreciate the, I'm sorry, Mr. Dirk. I appreciate the, the feedback and it is, it's gob-stopping how expensive this stuff is. But further questions from the board? Yes.
Is it, is it possible, is it possible to get something a little bit more interactive on the flow of traffic in and out of this property? And we're here and we've moved one of them to a one-way and the other one we're talking about doing a left turn only. And then we're talking about pedestrian safety and the light here. I'm just, I'm just really concerned because we already know that we have a line of traffic lining up that light, you know, by deceptives. And then, well, we're going to only go in this way, but we're going to come out that way, which now I can see our future is a long line of traffic that now extends past this building, waiting to get to the light because it's, it seems to be what we're creating. And I believe that counselor, Ward Five Counselor, as we're calling, had sort of brought this up. I'd like to see something a little bit more real life so the neighbors can see, you know, what, what this is all going to line up and look like. Because I think it's where we're going, is we're just creating a longer line of traffic to get to the light. So I want to be, I, I want to know what that traffic looks like in real life. And, and I want to be kind. I mean, we've had traffic studies in Newburyport for forty years that told us there's no impact. But every traffic study that had no impact created something in the city that was a little bit of impact and each one compounds the next. Because when I moved here in nineteen ninety-four, I didn't have to wait, wait in the light by deceptives. But now I do. So something happened. I don't know what happened, but something happened. And now we're looking at dropping two hundred plus houses right at the base of that hill. I, I really need something more interactive to see what's going on here because we have a whole neighborhood here who wants to know if we do this, what's the traffic going to look like? Can people safely get us across the street for an ice cream? I mean, these are basic needs that we, we need to, just to go over. The other thing, I mean, we're bantering about it right now. But the reality is, is this whole part of Low Street needs to somehow be redeveloped to track. We had to do it for CBS. I believe it turned into a whole thing that ended up taking two-plus years to get there. Right? That was a big deal. It got voted down by the city council, then it got brought back up two, two years later. It was a big deal. It was all about turning lanes and being safe. And now we're, now we're just a little bit down the street here and there's bigger questions here of, of how safe is this street? And, and what are we going to put on this street? So I'm, I'm turning into the city council. So I'm sorry.
I'm one hundred percent here what you're saying. I'm just, I think what we need to do is address exactly what you said, but what I want to do is try to separate facts from a lot of the numbers. I'm not saying that anyone said any of the numbers not correct. But I think everyone, you know, when we're hearing seventy-three vehicles, there was not seventy-three vehicles exiting the site. So I want to be very clear, but I think explaining it in a better way to look at the flow of what you said, which is to say, okay, during the morning, there's fifty-six vehicles exited and seventeen entered, not seventy-three. And they're not all, it's over an hour. So I think the dynamic that you just described, which is, help me understand that flow and how it relates to safety and what's going on today. We can do a better job of explaining that to maybe put it in a little bit more context so that it's not pictured as there's seventy-three vehicles and they're all arriving in fifteen minutes and it's already backed up. That's absolutely not what's going to happen.
But there, so there's, there's really three concerns here. One is certainly that intersect, that intersection where Hodges is, right? Noble Street is super dangerous, which is the top, right?
It is.
It is. And then Russell Terrace, I, I know this has been for a few years now. You just can't get out of Russell Terrace. I thought there was going to be something at Russell Terrace that was going to trip a light to allow them to get out. If that ever happened, but it needs to happen. So I know I'm throwing a lot at you and I'm sorry. You have three, you have three points for the neighborhood that really need to be addressed well.
Hey, we can explain it better. I'm going to paint myself, maybe, in a different light. I'm the traffic engineer that did all of that stuff for CBS, the car wash, the gas station, and the road work and the discussion about Russell Terrace. It's the same person. We're the ones who designed the signal and all of that. That's us. So I have the history and I think some of the residents that spoke about Russell Terrace, where there are those hearings. The idea of that sensor to navigate the lights was brought up. The state said no because it affects their signals. And so there's some history, but the nice thing is I understand the issues that you're expressing. And I think your consultant has been great to work with as well as Andy and the city engineer. So we'll try to frame this in a way and I'll work with you. It's all been to put something together that is more helpful and explain to circulation than the pedestrian crossings presented.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Further questions from the board? Any other questions?
I'll wait till the next session. We're about nine thirty soon.
All right. What I'm going to do at this point is I am going to propose for the members that we, and the applicant, that we continue the remainder of questions from the board on traffic analysis and parking. And that we continue the matter to be picked up from where we left off to either the thirtieth of this month or ten twenty-eight, preference on the thirtieth unless there's any.
So we're, we're scheduled on the thirtieth to start civil. So I, I think that's fine. I don't know what Mr. Dirk's availability is. And here you go. Okay.
Okay.
So that, that would be fine if we want to continue on, on this, on the thirtieth and then pick up civil because it's a whole meeting, so that's fine.
Absolutely.
I would just, if I could, so I'd ask for continuums to the thirtieth to continue this as, as well as that.
Okay. So moved. Well, hold on. I just, did you have something you want?
I had one other quick thing to say. I think in this context, I think what is important is this, and Mr. Dirk has said this. And all of the comments that you hear are about the existing conditions and the concern about what the impact this project might have on that. And, and I believe that Mr. Dirk is going to try to paint a more clear picture about the modest impact this project is having on the existing conditions. The existing conditions is a much bigger discussion. And because this is a forty-B and your counsel can address this at a later time, we do. What this project has to do about that is limited, or may do about that is limited because of the constraints and the regulatory framework under chapter four and B. But I think it's important to answer these questions for you. We've been working with the city. We will continue to do that, to answer those questions. But I just want to point out, which I think is obvious to everybody, about all of the comments about the existing conditions everywhere that everybody's talking about.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Yes, Mr. Joy.
Yeah, I, I think we're getting into argument here, but I didn't hear that. That's not what I heard. There is something that's changing and that's pedestrians.
Right.
So we've had ample testimony tonight that what is changing is that there will be two-hundred-and-twelve households coming to the site for the first time. And both the transportation consultants agreed, a lot of them are going to need to cross Low Street. So that is new.
I don't, I.
I disagree with that.
Well, let's, without, without delving into the argument, well, without delving into sort of the subject matter of, of those points of view, I do want to unpack that more thoroughly when we, when we come back and reconvene. It is fair notice that members of the board, myself included, certainly Mr. Agarwal and many, and maybe others find, have a difference of opinion with respect to what we've heard. And it's important to at least say that out loud for what it's worth.
Sure.
But what I want to do at this moment, unless there was anything further, what I want to do is entertain a motion to suspend and continue this application to take up on September thirtieth, the continuation of questions from the board and on the areas of traffic analysis and parking. And then delve into the next subject matter pillar, which will be civil engineering. I'm sorry, was it? Civil engineering. Thank you.
So, so well said.
All right. Do we have a motion and second? Mr. Ginta is seconded. Motion's made and seconded on the applicant's request and the board's request to suspend and continue. The, for just legal notice, the application remains open, just simply suspended, so nothing is closed and this matter continues. Calling the roll, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Duat.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Ginta.
Yes.
Mr. Agarwal. I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Sorry, one, two, three. You have five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Matters continue. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance and your participation. We'll see you next time. Thank you, Mr. Dirk, and also thank you, Mr. Dandren. And John Eric will be still online. Okay. It being nine thirty, we are going to, as promised or as threatened, depending on how you read it, we, we're going to move now to our first of our applications that are on the agenda that have been continued. We'll do Twenty Erie Avenue. This is the application of Tristan Toll, Twenty Erie Avenue. This matter was continued from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. The applicant seeks unnecessary permits, permissions and approvals for a special permit for non-conformities to reconstruct a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home on a lot with insufficient lot area. A new dwelling will exceed vertically and will maintain an existing, non-conforming, front yard setback. Attorney Orson, thank you very much for being with us. You don't need my help on this. We're going to release our city solicitor. All right, counsel. Thank you for, for your patience.
Thank you very much, members of the board. Chris Thornton, the attorney representative, Dryden and Toll and Brianna, Lena, the owners and applicants to this project. We have been here a number of times before. And what we've been trying to request from the board is a special permit to redevelop the existing site. What we have on the site presently is a, is a ranch house that was built around nineteen fifty-six. It has about nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet of living space on the first floor and a four-hundred-square-foot garage area. So there's a thirteen-hundred-square-foot footprint. And what we're proposing is to build up on that footprint, a similar size. Actually, we're moving the front back. We're creating quite a bit more front area from the garage where we're moving the, the, the frontage back six feet. And when, since we've been here, there's been quite a bit of conversation about what can really turn the massing. When we first came in, we were at about twenty-nine feet above elevation. We had two different two different gable facing forward, a couple of different roof lines that really did create a little more structure than perhaps was in keeping with the neighborhood. And we've been back before you a number of times to discuss various iterations of what that would look like. What we did hear from the board consistently was that the massing was, was too, was too great. So we have come down overall about five feet of total elevation in the front. We've also, most significantly, removed the living space above the garage. So if you can look to the left, previously, we had a full second story above. And that created a second story that was about fifty-six feet from side to side. Now, in doing what we've done here, which is to, to reduce that living space above the garage, we put a hip roof over it to further bring down the massing of the roof structure. And we've also lowered the, the roof line from left to right by about ten feet, further bringing down the term massing. I think what we've done here is really accomplished what the board has been asking us to do. And for that reason, we're hoping that this earns your, your approval.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll close the presentation and go to public comment. Anyone in the room? With that, we'll close the presentation and go to public comment. Anyone in the room wish to speak in connection with the application? Yes, sir?
Thank you. Carrie Lambert, nineteen Erie Avenue and, um. Couple of the issues I'd like to bring up are, well, basically just two issues on behalf of myself. And the other butters. Um, we've, we've obviously attended multiple hearings, all considered, um. Writing, in writing, in opposition to the height and scale of the construction at twenty Erie. After reviewing the latest plans and although some concessions have been made and that is much appreciated, thank you. Um, we do respectfully, respectfully request that the height of the whole structure be limited to no greater than the average height of the homes at twenty two and sixteen Erie. Both of which sit on similarly sized lots. This reasonable condition will ensure that the new home remains in scale with the surrounding property and preserves the character of our street. Lots of sixteen, twenty and twenty two area are all approximately the same size and form of cohesive street scale. Allowing a structure taller than the existing homes will create a disproportionate interference and negatively affect the sense of openness and visual continuity. It will also impede our privacy. This is the privacy of the McCollis. And, um, in addition, the, um. The other butters, myself and the, um. The other folks that are on, this was submitted online by Mr. McCollum. So all of the names on that are in support of this. So I'd like to thank you for your consideration of this and, um. We hope that we are able to come to a good resolution of this. The other issue I'd like to bring up has to do with the other project that's going on at, um. At twenty one here. Now, this one has been approved and demolition is about to begin. And, um, so the timing of these two projects is of great concern to everyone in this neighborhood. Erie Avenue is a small, narrow. Street, which is in deplorable condition. And these, the, the, this additional construction and vehicles that are gonna be on this street are gonna tear this street up even more. So what we'd like to do is ask that these projects be staggered so that they're not both going on at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments in the room?
Yes, just ask one question.
Yes, of course.
Excuse me, sir. I, I see your request. Uh, what height would the average be?
Uh, if you take the, take the height of two houses.
What would it be? I'm asking you, what, what would it be? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
You don't know that?
Not off the top of my head. It's easy to figure out.
Any, uh, any other comments in the room? Uh, do we see any comments online? Do you see any hands online? Uh, I'll close public comment and go to questions from the board. Who would like to start off? Yes, Mr. Ginta?
Just a question to the, the planning office. Would you know what the heights of the homes that are disreferenced would be?
Since I, I'd have to check. Yeah, I don't know. I'll tell them. No, I don't think we, unfortunately, don't have that tabbed in here.
I'll, I'll say there's, there's no, I mean. There's no way to know without a laser. Which could work, um, and, uh, or a stamped plan. Which, uh, which would be, uh, obtuse at best because it would require. Someone with a survey license, you know, um, or rather someone with an architectural. License to stamp a plan, um, of an adjacent parcel that's not subject to the application. Yes?
I, I just, I went down the street today and they're both Kate's. One, one's roof is kind of normally high and the other one's actually quite low. So basically it really wouldn't allow a full second floor.
I think that's what I was gonna just point out. The, the, the structures on the left and the right are, are. Uh, contemporaneous with the existing structures, so it was built in nineteen fifty's post-war. They're both pretty modest structures. They both, I would say, a story and a half. And, you know, we are talking about a neighborhood that's in, in, uh, in, in change and, and it's. Going through a phase of redevelopment and back. Directly across the street, this board dealt with a very similar application and what we're proposing is building a very similar scale. And in fact, yes, sir?
What, I? Since you brought up the building across the street at twenty one. Their, uh, on their plan, their height is twenty two, six, and yours is twenty four, nine. So, so. Yeah, it's closer to that, but you are more than two feet higher in your height because you have very high ceilings in your house that you're proposing. And you're also. That has a thirty six foot. Uh, of width presented to the street. You have a fifty four. Foot width presented to the street. So I mean, it's. I, I, I wish you hadn't brought up this house across the street because it's, it's, to me, it's more sympathetic with the neighborhood.
Certainly. Well, I would first say that, that I'm not quite sure I brought it up. It was something that was mentioned a while, a moment ago. Uh, secondly, uh, we weren't designed to, to what was, uh, going to be built across the street. We're designing what we thought would be appropriate for the site. Uh, we, we, you know, it is worth noting that that building is, uh, you know, has a similar. Elevation to ours and it is considerably taller than either of the buildings that the, the, uh, butters would suggest we should design to. I think that somewhat creates an arbitrary standard and it's really not. Consistent with where this neighborhood is headed. So I, I think what we're asking for is, is really, uh, you know, we have a house that's currently. Fifty two feet wide. We're asking that we, uh, build a house that's fifty four foot wide in its place. Where we have a house that's set back from the street sixteen and a half feet. We're asking to keep it in the same location, move it back on the left and right a little bit further. Uh, we really are not making a, a significant impact on, you know, the dimensional requirements here. Uh, we have brought down the scaling considerably. We've listened very carefully to what this board was looking for. And when you mentioned the area, the, the height, the interior height, if you look carefully at each plan, both plans have. An eight and a half foot first floor and a seven and a half foot second floor.
So how do you, so why is it, why is it, why is it more than two feet higher than?
You know, I actually looked at that very carefully as well. It, it, it has to do with the way that the buildings are designed. You also noticed that the building across the street is wider from front to rear. Which allows the roof to sit real differently on it. So, you know, everything is not entirely subjective, but it does have to do with some of the, you know, the.
I, I have no clue.
The engineering realities of, of designing a house.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, further questions from the board? No questions, um?
Mr. Chair, we do have the owner.
Oh, yes, please. Can you, I can't see. Let me give you a quick. Yes, hello.
Hi, hi, uh, my name is Brianna, the twenty Erie owner. I just wanted to point out, um, last time I saw the plans of twenty one Erie was this afternoon and. I don't wanna be mistaken, but I believe their mean height was twenty two point six. Where ours is twenty two point nine, which is like a three inch difference.
I'm gonna point out that both the elevations are above the two foot, uh, mean, mean, uh, grade. So, so we both, both buildings are, are now even the same two foot grade. And actually, so it is twenty four and a half, but the, the total height on the word.
Okay, um. Anything further?
Mr. Chair, it, it, could we see a picture of what the last. Presentation was on this house and, and what, what this was so we can see. Where we started and where we ended? Is that possible? Yeah, put an eyeball on it. That's all.
Caitlin's grabbing that, yeah.
I think that that's gonna be the, our best tool to simply eyeball it. I mean. Unless we wanna get into the mechanics of trying to measure it. Are we, are you trying to do that right now?
She's pulling it up. We get sort of cargo back.
Okay, um, further questions while, while Kate, Kate was doing that?
Okay, uh, I, I have one question.
Yes.
So internally, the, the, the way you were able to achieve this design is you, you. You forced up one of the bedrooms. Is that, you went from a floor.
Exactly. It's now every bedroom house. They did, uh, to create a little more living space on the first floor, they, they, uh. Created an office, a small office, uh, in the area that was previously portion of the, uh, first floor garage and they added a pantry to the certification.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions before we close and go to deliberations?
What about the pictures?
Um, well, we can still do that. We, um. While you're doing that. You ready to deliberate? We are. Uh, we're gonna go to deliberations and when. When Caitlin's able to publish this, we'll, we can circle back and pop into it. So again, we're deliberating the special permit, the criteria for special permit. Uh, who wishes to. Is that coming up now?
It went up yet.
Okay, um, does everybody have this in front of them?
So this was the prior iteration?
Yeah, that, that's what we showed on July twenty second.
Do you wanna go first?
All right, uh, who would like to, uh, kick off deliberations?
Jared, I'll, I'll go first. Um, we've all put a lot of time this one. I don't have the boat time, but I put a lot of time into it. Um, and, and also on twenty one Erie. And then the adjacent block, the Harding Ave, we had a recent case. So, uh. Uh, I do think there's been a qualitative and quantitative improvement. Um, that they, I do think the applicant did listen to what we said. Um, and I think, uh, by eliminating the master bedroom and, uh. Uh, uh, basically the second story over the garage, it's much more in line. Than the existing neighborhood. And to me, the neighborhood is not just the abutting of buildings. It's pretty clear. It's the whole street scale. So I don't just look at the pillars of either side. Second thing I take into account is, uh, and I, I think it's valid is that, um, you know, we're not. We haven't been forbidding redevelopment of these non-conforming lots. We realize they are gonna be developed and they are gonna get second stories. So. You know, with, with all respect to the neighbors, it will be immediately affected on either side. I, I personally don't think it's appropriate to limit the height to the average of the abutters in this case. Because I think they may also in future wanna build up to. And the, the new standard of how high is, is really being set by buildings like twenty one Erie. That's my opinion. Now, so what I'm down to is just the comment that Ken brought up, which is, uh, it is true and, and counsel just, uh, clarified. Twenty one Erie is at twenty two and a half feet. Uh, they call it median roof height. And this project is twenty four and nine and a half, which is mean height. To me, does that make this project substantially more detrimental versus the other one? To me, no, it doesn't. I, I don't think that difference is enough to, uh, uh, put it over the line for a denial. That's my opinion.
Very good. Further deliberations?
I'll echo these, uh, my colleagues.
So, thank you, Mr. Bennet. And any further?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with, uh, Mr. Bennet, Mr. Agarman. Yeah, and, and I too. I mean, we, we asked the applicant to take the top off the garage and they did. Um, and I agree that, uh, you can't just tell everybody you can't add a second story. So. I can support this in its current state.
Very good. Anything further? I, I have to say I agree. Uh, I think it is, and with again, respect, sir, uh, to comments and, and with empathy to the neighborhood and its closeness. It is also permitted within the zoning for that same street, a, an average mean between the even the peak. Um, of, uh, a certain measure in feet, uh, roof height. And it hasn't been the position of this board to create special exceptions or limitations within what's permitted. Uh, and I do think it's appropriate to look at the big picture of the street versus any immediate adjacent. Uh, homes to take an average there. It would be an outlier. Uh, decision of this board to, to further micro that analysis beyond the context of the neighborhood. So, um, I, I don't think it's. Appropriate to do that either. So I also feel that the applicant's made significant. Movement toward trying to address our concerns, the concerns of, of many of the neighbors, though perhaps not all. Um, anything further in deliberations before we close?
Oh, I, I'm, I'm in support. I, I, I feel as if the two pictures, uh, told the story.
Yeah.
Uh, that house has significantly shrunk.
Yeah.
Uh, from where they started, it was a lot of work, but they did, they didn't answer the calls that we made. So.
Agreed. Yeah, very good. Uh, I'll close deliberations. Do we have a motion to approve?
I, I can't make a motion. I just wanted to catch two of the comments. So maybe just, uh, put in a condition of approval that they have to give at least seven days' notice. To the, everyone on the street of demolition. And I guess prop flyers, it's not gonna be costly. And the other was, uh, I would just suggest, uh. Uh, and I'll, I'll help too. We'll contact him, Ward six counselor. Uh, Byron Lane, to make sure there's coordination with the demolition and construction of twenty one. That's really the only way it's gonna happen in my experience is if the ward counselor is on it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Agree. Is there a street tree thing or?
No, not, not at all.
PBS hasn't made any recommendations for, for street trees. Um, so do we have, uh, thank you, Jared, for that. Um. Do we have a motion with condition and a second?
I'll move that the application for special permit for nonconformities, uh, application twenty five dash eleven. Be approved with the conditions that, that Mr. Agarman stated, uh, a few minutes ago.
Okay, very good. Motion's made by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Ginta, calling the roll, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Duat?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yeah.
Mr. Ginta? I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries, uh, with that condition and, uh. We can, uh, reach out to, uh, Ward five counselor. Uh, I'm sorry, Ward six counselor Byron Lane, just to make sure that neighborhood information is coordinated as was requested and I think as was, uh, promised. So I think that's a good, uh, collaboration. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. And, and for our neighbors, um, here from, uh, Erie, uh, thank you for your continued patience and participation. It's, it's critical to the process.
They're coming there.
Um, okay, moving on to our next application this evening. Uh, this is. Five Christopher Street. Uh, this is an application of Stephen Kobs, Kobsik, uh, the application, uh, of a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions and approvals to demolish an existing porch. Uh, at the side of the structure and construct a new two-story addition in a similar location that extends laterally. Uh, and that extends upward, uh, a non-conforming front yard setback. Uh, to add a shed dormer across the front of the house, which extends upward and creates a nonconforming front yard setback. The proposal will add more than five hundred square feet to the property. Hello, good evening. Thank you for your patience.
I feel like I'm one of the least formal person of the night. Um. Yeah, I've lived on Christopher Street for eighteen years and, uh, I thought it's pretty straightforward, just looking to. Demolish my porch, which is a twelve by twelve and in its place. Uh, build a similar fifteen by sixteen, but bring it to the front of the house. And then put a dormer across the front, just creating another bedroom for one of my daughters and. That's about it.
Well, we love succinct and brief and, and clean, so, uh, thank you. All right, we'll close the presentation. Anyone in the room wish to speak or comment in connection with the application? Seeing no hands, um, anyone online? I don't see any hands online either. Oh, I mean, I do see one hand. Um. I see, uh, and we only see the, uh, your, looks like a, an abbreviation. Is that S K? One eighty five?
Yeah.
All right, everybody. Wait, we're, you have the floor.
Awesome. Yeah, I just wanted to say we've talked to a lot of our neighbors, uh, and they're all in support of, uh. The projects, um, so we just wanted to put that in there and thank you all for your time tonight.
Very good. And we, I, I, I know your name's not S K one five oh eight, but it'd be just for, for our, our keeper of the minutes.
Yeah, Steve Kobsik. I'm Kristen's husband, uh, five Christopher Street.
Very good. Thank you. We, we, we did figure. So, um, thank you very much. Um, seeing no other hands, no other hands in the room, no other hands online. We'll close public comment. Go to questions from the board. Any questions? No? Going once, going twice. We'll close questions, uh, deliberations. And again, we're deliberating the, uh, special permit, special permit for nonconformities criteria.
Mr. Swanton, I'll deliberate. There, there's a two-prong test here. Have you created any more brand new nonconformities and you have not, so.
Have you created any more brand new non-conformities and you have not, so it passes that. And the other test is, um, is it substantially more detrimental than the neighborhood than the current house, which currently doesn't fit the zoning? The way I look at it is the roof line's not going up at all, you're basically putting dormers in and you're changing a, a side porch into. A not really huge room, I think it's like thirteen two by fourteen four, I mean, it's, it's not gigantic. Um, so I don't see this as being substantially more detrimental and I just totally think it's kind of nice, so I can support this. Very good, uh, further deliberations? I agree with Mr. Swanton, I do feel the applicant's application is very clear, it's succinct, it conforms with the criteria, I, I can also support it. Um, any further application, I'm sorry, any further deliberations? We'll close deliberations, uh, do we have a motion to approve? In a second.
I'll make the motion to approve the application for five Christopher Street.
Very good, and it looks like Mr. Ginta's seconded, motion made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Ginta, calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yeah.
Mr. Ginta.
Yeah.
And I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, thank you for your patience this evening and for coming back. Online.
Thank you, you'll make, uh, one of mine under, very happy, every year for Christmas, she's asked for a, uh, bedroom in our house and so. She's going to be veteran hopefully.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Well, good luck to you and thank you, uh, okay, going to, coming to our last, uh, application. Uh, this evening, this is the application for two nine seven Merrimack Street, uh, David Canely, care of Lisa Almeida, me telling when you cost it, this is a special permit request. For non-conformities to add a second story on or near, uh, two thousand and seven, one-story addition in the same footprint. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the board, uh, for the record, Lisa Almeida, me telling Costa thirty Green Street, your report and with me this evening is Chris Crum. Of JMA Architects, who is the architect on the project. Um, David and Emily Canely, uh, live at two ninety seven Merrimack Street, um, and it's in the R two district. And as the, um, care suggested, there is a single-story addition that was constructed in two thousand and seven on the. Um, it's actually on the side of the property because the front yard is actually Butler Street and not Merrimack Street, because it's got two front yards. And they want to put a second story addition over that and add a couple of dormers, um, to be able to have some better living space in the attic. Um, they, uh, the property is presently non-conforming, um, having existed since eighteen ninety four. Which is well before the adoption of zoning in the city of Newburyport in September of nineteen forty. The addition is, um, in the side, um, again, on the two thousand and seven one-story addition. The non-conformity is lot area, five thousand two hundred square feet with ten thousand square feet are required. Secondary front yard setback is nine point three, that's the Merrimack Street setback, um, where twenty five feet is required. And the rear yard setback, which is opposite Butler Street, is five point nine, where twenty five feet is required. Um, the reason that we're here is the upward extension of that rear yard setback. Um, not to the same extent, probably about a foot and a half further away from the rear yard. When we take on that second story on that, um, on that new addition. So the proposed addition, um, if you go to the next slide, um, beginning. Um, so here you can see Butler Street on the right-hand side of the plan, um, that's actually the primary front yard. And then you see the house setback a little bit, Merrimack Street at the bottom. And that, and that section in the back, that's where we're jumping up, um, to the second story. Um, and you can see that rear yard setback at, um, five point nine. And so the second floor will go up and still exacerbate or extend the rear yard setback, but not to the same extent. Uh, next slide please. So the proposal, as I said, adds that second story, um, it, it's going to, the, um, architects have taken care to get complimentary of the existing structure. Um, it's going to have two over two windows to match, uh, four-inch exposure on the wood clavers like the existing. Existing, excuse me, uh, the design employs the doghouse dormers to complement the Nantucket dormers and. I'll remind the board that the Nantucket style dormers, one of the suggested styles of dormers, um, from the city, one, one employees dormers. There is a shed dormer in the rear, that new addition, but when you see the photos in a little bit, you'll see that, can't see that. Rear addition on the second story from the street at all. Um, and then what you'll also see as Chris goes through the drawings, is the second floor addition is subservient to the original, is shorter. Um, than the main house, it's more narrow on the easterly side. Um, and at this point, I'll let Chris review the elevations.
Uh, good evening, uh, Chris Crum, I am, uh, not, uh. Or they don't work for JMA, I'm just a, a colleague. Uh, going in for her, uh, represent for JMA, I'm next right now, um, helping her out. Um, so what we have here obviously is, as, as, uh, customer mentioned, um, we're just putting on the, uh, second floor over the back, the, the back. First floor addition, or the, putting a second floor addition on the first floor, back part of the house, and then putting dormers onto the, um. Onto the top floor, the roof, the attic space, um, and if you can push through, like, you can see there, those are the gable side dormers. Uh, the, the, the doggy dormers, as they probably, most people call them, the gable dormers, um, on the side of the front of the house. Um, which obviously are a bit lower than the existing ridge, um, we go to the next slide. Um, and the rear of the property again, um, you'll see the doghouse dormers on the left-hand side of the rear of the house. Um, the shed dormer, which is not visible from the streets, on the right-hand side of the house, and then. How, the roof lines, and then, uh, both these, all these doghouse dormers, according to the guidelines of the dormer design, you're reporting court are about eighteen inches from the wall below. Um, and we can continue to the next one. Uh, that's just the existing, uh, Asian Butler, uh, next one. So here we have, um, the doghouse, the Nantucket dormer on the front. Um, and you'll notice that, uh, as, as, um, council meet mentioned, that the windows are two over two, matching existing windows that are there. The transom windows in the Nantucket dormer are also, um, almost the same size and scale that one of the sashes on the double tons, to make it look in scale, uh, with the rest of the windows that are there. Um, the, on the doghouse dormer, the gable dormer, um, aligns with the, uh, bay window below, to give you that verticality and lineage. Uh, the windows, um, throughout the process, uh, all the E work, the rates and the E work will be, uh, designed and built in kind with the existing. Deep of the house, so it keeps the same character of vernacular of the house intact throughout, so it looks like it was their intention from getting. Uh, and the doghouse dormers on the rear of the property, or the rear of the house on the right-hand side there, um, they do mimic the same, uh, doghouse dormers that you see from the Nantucket dormer. Um, and this is purposely done so that we do keep the same style and technique and character, uh, throughout the process, the next slide. Oh, and I'm sorry, also, uh, the, uh, the doghouse dormers are also, uh, shared to be, uh, forty-two inches from the gate lens, uh, the edge of the roof. As required by the design guide for the dormers on the lumbered floor, in this one place. Uh, and this is the other side, and the next slide, that's existing, and this is the proposed, um, this is the one that faces the opposite side of Butler Street. Um, and, uh, basically same doghouse dormer, uh, Nantucket dormer, I'm sorry, on the main portion of the ridge. And, uh, then the shed dormer on the backside, just to get, to be able to get some headspace in there, uh, for the bathroom. Um, and, uh, I'll, again, all, all of our dormers are thirty-six and, uh, forty-two inches from the edge of the roof line. And eighteen inches back minimum from the wall below as required. Next. Uh, and this is again, just from the front. Uh, with the, that's the heights, um, just to show you that, uh, the height of this building is in relation to all the other buildings and how, uh, all the other homes in the area. So this fits in naturally with the rest of the neighborhood and will not be more detrimental. Next. And here you have, uh, the proposed second floor plan, um, so there we are creating that master bedroom suite on the, above the backside of the house. Um, and next slide. And the top floor would be kind of create a bedroom up there with the, uh, master bath. Um, and I know it may look like it's a little bit bigger than what it, but in actuality, when we take into account the ceiling lines. Um, the shed dormers and the actual gable dormers that you have up there, um, it's not actual, a lot of those walls will be lower than six feet. Um, which is the criteria for measuring the square footages in, uh, on all floor levels. Um, so in essence, uh, you know, it may look a little bit bigger on floor plan aspect of it, but in actuality in three D. Um, if this is not as, uh, elaborate and, and large as it is. And we're only adding a little over six hundred square feet, yeah, a little over six hundred, uh, fifty square feet. Um, so, and it's not that much of addition, uh, in relationship to the other houses in the neighborhood. There are homes that range much higher than the square footage that we're, have on this house, um, in scale and size. And happy to answer a question, best guy. So.
Um, so I just wanted to show some neighborhood photos, um, there's a very large tree on the corner of Butler. And Merrimack Street, and that's a view of it, so that's the house on the corner, the yellow house. Uh, and so you'll barely be able to see the new dormer on the right-hand side. Next slide please. And this is the, a back view of the house, a little bit close up, um, from the house next door, uh, Butler Street, next slide please. And here's one from the street, so you can see the two thousand and seven addition, and you'll see where the proposed addition goes on top of the, next slide. Um, and then this is the, this is further down Merrimack Street, and because of that tree, you can't see the house at all. But I thought it was important to see it, so you can see it from the street, next slide please. Um, and then this is, um, on the, um, opposite side, so you can just see what, um, the, the other houses in the neighborhood look like, next slide. And then here's a closer view of, um, actually, could you go back one, Andy, because I was disoriented, so. The house on the furthest to the right here is this structure, and so you can't see the rear addition. Coming down Merrimack Street because of how close it is and how it's located against the house next door, next slide please. So this is a little closer up, so you have to look down the back again, you're still not going to be able to see the addition, which is going to be shorter than the existing structure. Next slide please. And then these are houses in the neighborhood, so this is across the street on Merrimack Street. Next slide. And this is across the street on Butler Street that faces Merrimack, so there's that big yard there, and then there sits that more square, next slide. And this is looking up Butler Street, and next slide please. And this is a house, uh, right next door on Butler Street, this is number one Butler Street. Next slide please. So the board needs to determine that there was no addition of a new non-conformity, and here we are not proposing any addition of a new non-conformity. And the next is that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the next slide please. So here, uh, the board can find, we believe that it will not be substantially more detrimental. Uh, it's important to note that the footprint of the home will not change at all, the only impact on the existing non-conformities is that upward extension of the new addition. Of the rear setback, but not to the same extent. Um, while the dormers on the plan on the front elevation appear close to the front, indeed, they are setback and compliant dormers, as I indicated. Uh, the view of the dormers from the easterly bound travel on Merrimack Street, um, is where it will be most visible, but. It's merely not visible at all because of the tree, and then vice versa, you can't see the back of the house coming in the opposite direction, traveling west on Merrimack Street. Um, the current living area, uh, you go to the next slide please, Andy. Um, the current living area of the home is seventeen hundred and eighty square feet. Um, with the new space, an additional six hundred and eighty, the proposed structure will be two thousand four hundred and sixty, so how does that fit? In the neighborhood generally, with right smack dab in the middle. Um, the homes in the lower area of Butler Street, um, at three Butler are a thousand eighty-six, that's the smallest in the area. Up to six Butler, which is two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Uh, three oh five Merrimack Street, which is that blue one right down, um, on the opposite corner, is two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, two square feet. Um, one Butler Street is one thousand nine hundred and forty-nine square feet. Uh, four Butler Street, which is a two-family, that is one building, is three thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet. Three oh seven to three oh nine Merrimack, again, is a two-family, again, one building is four thousand ninety-nine square feet. Uh, two thousand, uh, two hundred and ninety-three Merrimack Street is, um, which is, uh, next door, is two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four square feet. And then two hundred and ninety-one for, uh, Merrimack is seventeen hundred square feet, and three thirty Merrimack Street is twenty one hundred and fifty-nine square feet, so. This clearly fits in the middle of all of that, and will not be substantially more detrimental as far as the size of the house itself. Um, I have provided seven letters of support to the board, um, from all of the surrounding neighbors and one across on Merrimack Street. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you, uh, we'll close that portion, uh, of public hearing and, uh. Wait a minute, where are we in this process? Did we already do? Or a public comment, thank you.
We'll, we'll let it go, it's getting late.
Yeah, yeah, anyway, where are you folks doing it, my bedroom? Okay, um, public comment, anyone among the two gentlemen in the room wish to speak further? Very good, good answer, right answer, um, we'll close public comment, uh, actually, is there a hand online? Uh, nope, uh, we'll close public comment, go to questions from the board?
I, I just have one question, so in the, in the letters of support, um, did you get one from the Merrimack Street of Butter, or are they all?
Um, we have, uh, Butler. And Butler, Butler, uh, three oh five Merrimack Street, yes, that's the, the little one.
No, the two ninety-three, two ninety-five, the immediate of Butter.
Uh, no, I don't have one for immediately there.
Okay, because there was one guy that signed his name, but he didn't give his address. Okay, nice.
Any other questions from the board? All right, closing questions from the board, we'll go to, um, deliberations. Again, deliberating the special permit criteria, and that's to. Deliberate.
I'll, I'll give it a go, uh, we know it's a two-prong test, there are no such, there are no new non-conformities of questions whether or not. This application, uh, is substantially more detrimental, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, based upon the information in the applications, specifically the, uh. The information and the evidence relating to the size of the homes in the neighborhood. Uh, where this, uh. Application will fit squarely in the middle in terms of size of the homes in the neighborhood, and also, uh, photographs demonstrate to me that in terms of scale and mass and this, uh. Post, uh, the improvement will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, seven, uh, letters of support, uh, the design is tasteful and, uh, consistent with the existing architecture. And, uh, blends nicely, uh, with the street scale, so for all those reasons, I would, uh. Approve the application for a special permit.
Yes, I, I concur and would add that the, uh, the fact that this addition is essentially in the back, uh, is significant. And also the fact that the dormers, they follow. Dormer regulations as far as set-ins from ends and set-in from the sides, so I think all of that adds to. Uh, my comfort with this, that, but I agreed with what Greg had said before that, I'm just adding a couple.
Very good, anything further?
Well, just a couple of clarifications, uh, I also think it's not substantially detrimental for what that's worth, but, uh. There, I, I found by accident, there had been a, an application to do a two-story addition with a garage, actually, back in two thousand and seven, and then it was withdrawn. And then they did the buy, the buy right, so I, I did look at that drawing of what it was that didn't have legs, and it was. It was very different than this and not appropriated, um, it was basically a, it didn't, it didn't subordinate the addition. It was a sort of equally high new addition connected by a, like a breeze way, and it, so I can, I, this is not like that, this is where the, the architecture has been sensitive and. Uh, counsel and, and the attorneys explain, uh, uh, very well. That it's not going to have a big impact on the street skate, either on Merrimack or Butler.
Agreed, I agree with that, um. Any further deliberations? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move that the, uh, two ninety-seven Merrimack Street application for special phone for non-conformity, uh, be approved.
I'll second it, thank you, Mr. Bennet, thank you, uh, Mr. Swanton, motion's made, seconded, calling the role, Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Ginta.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, uh, the motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Very good, okay, that ten fifteen, right?
One minute.
Right on the, right on the notes, okay, so we will close our public hearings and we'll go into business meeting, we have the approval of the minutes from September ninth, any changes, modifications? We have a motion to approve the minutes as is, I'll move, I'll lose, seconded. Thank you, Mr. Ginta, the motion is made to approve the minutes as is, all those in favor, this is a voice vote, aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, abstentions, non-votes, the ayes have it, motion carries, thank you, the minutes are approved. The last matter that we have to deal with is, do we want to vote on the board rules and regs for hearing and meeting format, remote participation? Any comments? Any further thoughts?
We pass it tonight, is this the last night we allow the?
I appreciate you asking that question, because it was one of my concerns, just trying to delineate as clearly as possible to general public for, you know, transparency purposes and, you know, consistency on a given night, not necessarily having a different rule for one hearing and then having a different expectation for the other hearing. I think here, it seems like on a go-forward basis, I don't know what we have for the upcoming agendas, but I think we can sort of have a clear, you know, cut and delineation here, we want to make sure the advertisements, as I know previously, I think that some additional language may be added in there, but I think if we can make sort of a clean transition there, I think we just want to make sure that applicants, and or should say interested parties who come to the hearings moving forward are advised that if they come to a future meeting, for instance, and they want to comment, they, they should know that they should be here, again, and the notices going out in the future, that'll be noted.
We can, we can just make it, why don't we just suggest that the rule will take effect December first, twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, I was gonna say either that or as of now, like, any further public notification will carry that notice, and then we just, I can, as the chair, I can just notify members of the public for every meeting until, until.
I, I like to get Greg's viewpoint, but I, Andy, I don't think you need to be so precise in the advertisement and add all that language, I mean, really, the due process only requires reasonable notice.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have to give them all of the details about every contingency. And, and as it was even before COVID, you know, there was always a possibility that people would show up at the hearing chamber and it would be canceled, and that's just how it goes. And also, we always continue, you know, we do continue, no one has any notice of that. They come, they come in here and then we deliver, oh, we're going to continue it, but it's not the advertisement.
Right.
So you don't need to, honestly, I don't.
Yeah.
Frank disagrees, I.
I understand, I guess my initial concern is just, for instance, if we send it on advertisement and it doesn't cover that ground, but then we go from, you know, no public comment to a snowstorm where we have to have a forward remote meeting. We've at least covered the base in which, we've covered all, you know, all scenarios in which you might initially give a notice that everybody should be in person to give comments, but then you can actually take the remote comments at that, so I just wanted to cover those bases, but we could take a look at the, I might have to take a look at the notice language and thin out if we can. It just seemed that to cover all those bases and give enough clarity, I'm more than happy to wordsmith and reduce that, I know working with you or others. It just seemed that we could cover all those bases without anybody wondering or.
You have to shrug aside here, any, any new notice, any new advertisements from now on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think from, from this point forward, like, anything that comes into the office that has to be noted, noticed, will now have the new, will be subject to the new rule. And for every public hearing we have between now and when that washes itself through, or however long we feel it's appropriate, I will make at the beginning of the meeting, a reminder notification, everyone in the room, please be advised, there's a new rule, it's published on our city's website. We will no longer be doing remote meetings, so if you plan to participate, plan to attend. And that will just simply be something that will be resonated every single time verbally, in the room and in person, as well as published going forward and.
You know, I guess, what about our forty B, is that?
Well, we already advertised it. You've already done the advertising, I think the continuity is picked up by your meeting here.
That was still, can have remote attendance all the way to.
Of course, any, any application that's already gone out, that has not yet been, like, any application that works still gets to do participation, and I'll make that clear, you know.
Okay.
But if, you know, if anything that, that is ongoing or underway gets to enjoy the benefits of the old rule, anything that is published as of this date or tomorrow forward will be under the new, the new guidelines of removal of the virtual meeting.
Well, with that condition, I move the question.
All right, motion to approve with that caveat, do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ginta. All right, motion's made and seconded, calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Ginta.
Yes.
Mr. Igerman. What was that?
You can't.
Said a questionable mumble vote?
Can't wait to get it again.
So I vote yes, that is, what is that, six, one, that's the affirmative, the ayes have it, motion carries. All right, great, we can get rid of this owl eventually. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you, all those in favor, aye?
Yay.
Ares, thanks, guys. You were kind of close to our.